Morning.
Morning.
I'd like to call the August 19th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Can we have an establishment of quorum, please?
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Ms. Kriepner?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Huff? Mr. Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Soysen? Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Secretary Daly?
Here.
Mr. Soysen?
There.
All right, Madam Chair, please let the record reflect that we have seven members are present and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the computer republic for religious sins, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yeah.
Are there any changes? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the August 19th, 2025 agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, they stand approved. Number five, review and approval of minutes. That would be for July 9th and July 15th.
I've reviewed the minutes for the July 9th and July 15th. I see no reasons to revise them and move that we approved the minutes as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Item six, I do not have a report. Commissioner Gordon?
Just have one thing, not necessarily germane to planning and zoning this morning, Madam Chair, but did want to wish you a happy birthday.
Oh, wow. Hey, happy birthday. Happy birthday. Nice.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other commission members? Okay. Item seven, Secretary Daly.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I just have a couple of things to update you on. The first is to let you know that we did go to the Board of County Commissioners with the revisions to the Employment Campus zoning district. And that is scheduled for a public hearing on September 4th. That's a Thursday. The proposed amendments are available on the county attorney's section of the county website if anybody is interested in looking at the exact amendments that are the subject of the hearing. In master plan news, I wanted to let you know that I gave an update presentation to the Board of County Commissioners on August 7th. This was generally speaking, the same information that you all heard back in, I think it was early summer, just kind of catching you up on where we were with things. The only difference is that because we've had the work groups going over the course of the summer, I was able to share a little bit in terms of what those work groups have been doing. I also wanted to let you know that included in that update was information about sort of our next step, so I wanted to share that with you as well. So just to put on your radar screen, we are, we have two work groups that have an additional meeting that they scheduled. One is this week and the other is next week. So we're going to be lagging just a little bit in terms of being able to deliver the reports to you. So what I'd like to do is share those reports or those recommendations in two different meetings. The first in October, your evening meeting in October, we'll do just kind of a staff overview of what the process has been, what the, what the work groups have been doing, that sort of thing. And then in early November, at the evening meeting, we'll have the chairs of those work groups present the actual reports to you. In the meantime, we're also going to be working on scheduling some, kind of getting gearing up for the next phase of things. So I'd like to try to schedule another joint meeting with you all and our Board of County Commissioners, just as a way for us to continue to keep the lines of communication open, to do a little bit of progress checks and make sure that we're on the right track. And then I've also put out the idea of organizing, I don't know, I'll call it a planning summit, an opportunity for the elected officials and planning commission members from both the county and all of our towns to, I should say, all of our municipalities, to kind of come together and talk about the real critical planning-related topics that we've kind of throughout this whole process been noting as essential to being able to look forward to the next 10 years of the county and how our incorporated areas and our unincorporated areas function together to achieve those mutual goals. So as you can imagine, that'll be quite a logistical feat. So we'll be looking at how we can organize that, what the best date and time would be for that. So stay tuned. Lastly, on the master plan items, I just want to kind of remind us, as we're starting to move from the background information, preliminary conversations with the work groups into the work of actually figuring out what we need to update with the plan. Just a reminder that our direction, the direction that we've been working under was to look at the update as some minor tweaks to the plan, not a complete overhaul. That's the, that's the direction that we've been working under, and so that'll be how we kind of frame the, the next discussions. With that in mind, I'd like to encourage you to reread the master plan, the Freedom Plan, the Finsberg Plan, so that when we, when we take all of this information that we've been gathering and, and discussing with the work groups and say, okay, based on this, what do we want to update, that we have a good basis and, and starting point for those discussions. Any questions on what I've shared about the master plan or the employment campus?
I had one, I forgot, so.
Okay.
You don't come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know we have a couple of extensions, so where do you want to cover that?
Couple times two. I think I have five here for you this month, so bear with me. Good morning. So the first extension that we have is M 07013. The project is called Stillwater. This is just a one lot subdivision and they're in their 15th extension. It is in Commissioner District 5. The next one is S 190040. It's called T-Mobile at Misty Manor. And that is a communication tower and it's in Commissioner District 5. This is the first extension request for that project. So you might recall it from recent. The next one, you'll hear more about later today. It is P 200071. This is the Byron Hills subdivision. This is the second extension. There are four lots. It's in Commissioner District 5. And it's on your agenda today for final approval. So they were this close, but needed that extension to carry them through to recordation. The next project is S 190021. It is the winery at Cold Saturday. This is the first extension for this project and it's in Commissioner District 2. And you may recall that project as well. They're working through some legal document process to reach their end goal. And the last one is M 09001, Rosie Acres, Section 3. This is the 14th extension for this subdivision of two lots and it's in Commissioner District 4.
I do have one question.
Yes.
The Byron subdivision?
Mm-hmm.
Is that three or five? How many lots is that?
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
Four? Four.
Okay. I thought it was, okay. I thought it was different.
So the winery for Cold Saturday, is that the, where the bridal stuff is too? Is that the same parcel?
I'm not that familiar with the project. David, did you, is there a bridal component? Is that what you said, as in horses or as in wedding brides?
For Cold Saturday.
Where, where, where is it?
Is it separate? Just.
I'm sorry. It's an event venue. Go ahead.
That's correct. So originally, the project went as a winery and wedding venue. And I think they've since dropped the, the wedding venue aspect of it, but I do believe that they still have events associated with the winery aspect of it.
Okay.
And where is that? Where's that located?
That's off of Gambor Road.
91, yeah.
91.
Okay.
If I can, I'd like to also provide a little bit of clarity as far as the Byron Hills lots as well. So the, the lot as it sits, and we're going to go into this a little later, as Ms. Mathias alluded to, but as it sits, the, the property is buildable. So you can put a house on that today. What's being proposed is the creation of three more residential lots. So the plan is technically only creating three lots, but in total, there are going to be four lots there.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Okay. BZA cases?
Good morning, commissioners. I have one BZA case. Case number 6577 is a request for a conditional use of 32-bed assisted living facility, which is a modification of a conditional use granted in BZA case number 5128 of a 16-bed assisted living facility. The property is located at 80 Bell Road, Westminster. The property is located within the county's agriculture and residential 20,000 zones. The lot is approximately 37.23 acres. Planning staff finds this request is consistent with the Carroll County master plan as amended in 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? No?
I have nothing else.
Okay, moving right along. Number eight, Town of Hampstead annexation.
So while Javier is making his way up here, I just want to give you a little introduction to this. This is an annexation for the Town of Hampstead. I know Jim Mork is here from the town. If you have any questions. This is informational only because there is no waiver of zoning that's requested or required for it. And we often get the question when we have informational-only items, what do you want us to do with this? So there is no formal action that you need to take. We will be presenting this to the Board of County Commissioners. And they will send a letter of comment to the town and will include in that the fact that we presented this to you. And, and what I would suggest is that if you are amenable to it, you can express your support for the annexation without taking a formal, a formal vote. So we could do just a sort of a voice vote for that. The reason why I think that's important is because you'll hear from Javier that we did look at this in terms of whether it's consistent with both the county master plan and the town's municipal growth element of their plan. So your support of it would basically just be indicating that there's nothing, there's no red flags that say that their town's annexation of this property is in conflict with anything that we have. Okay?
Javier? Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Javier Toro, comprehensive planner, town manager, Mr. Jim Mork is joining me today.
Morning.
We are today, as Daphne mentioned, we receive a request for an annexation on July 9th, 2025. This is the Narain property. It is owned by Ajudya Narain Jr. The property is a total of .21 acres and it's located at 1730 North Main Street in Hampstead. It is parcel 292 and it's on the tax map number 33 and it's located within the second commissioner district. The property at this moment, it is within the municipal growth area of the Town of Hampstead as per the 2010 comprehensive plan, the 2023 amendment, and is contagious to a corporate limits of the Town of Hampstead. You have the slides where you can see, as I mentioned, it's .21 acres. Just to give you a point of reference, this is located, the property is located next to the storage facility that's on, on Main Street in Hampstead. So just so that you have an idea where the property is. And it's, and it's a residence. Currently, when it comes to zoning, it is in the county, it is located in the I-1 industrial district. And the Town of Hampstead has confirmed that the property will be switched over to the restricted industrial, .21 acres or 9,424 feet. This property does not request a waiver as there are no major changes in its category. Designated land use, as per the Town of Hampstead 2010 comprehensive plan, the 2023 amendment, it is located, as I mentioned previously, in the restricted residential, restricted industrial category. Water and sewer, which is the reason why the property is being requested to be annexed, so that it could be connected to the Town of Hampstead water service. It is located in the W-1 category, which is existing, and sewer service is located in the S-3, which is priority. After reviewing the, all the information on the property, planning staff recommends that the Town of Hampstead give public notice by posting the property prior to the date of the public hearing, which I understand will be taking.
When will that publish? Second Tuesday in September.
September, and notifying all adjoining property owners. And our findings are, planning staff finds that the property, it's, the proposed zoning for the property of the annexation area is consistent with the land use and density invasion for the area of the Town of Hampstead 2010 comprehensive plan amended in 2023, and is compatible with the surrounding area's properties. Staff also finds that the proposed annexation would not overburden public facilities or municipal services. Based on these findings, staff recommends that Planning and Zoning Commission, you convey your support for the annexation to the Board of Commissioners, which will be presented, represented to them this Thursday, August 21st, 2025. Any questions you might have?
What's on the property right now?
It is a residence and Carroll County zoning confirmed that the property, and I have the document here, one moment, confirmed that is, currently, it is considered legal non-conforming use due to the property already being there before the zoning was put in place.
So it's a residence that's on industrial zoning property?
Yes.
That's new.
And so the same situation arises if it comes into the town in that the land use is, is industrial, but it's been used as a residence since before the current zoning went into effect. So that's why we'd like to keep the non-conforming industrial use.
And then the, the, the storage facility around that, is that zone industrial?
It is. It is surrounded on three sides by industrial.
Okay.
Just to the south, it abuts the North Carroll Business Park, which is IDA property that they're currently marketing.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
I have nothing.
Okay, so.
We just need a voice vote?
Yes.
Yes.
So you need a motion? I move we approve the annexation of the Narain property. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes.
I'll move we approve it and send it to the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Oh, hang on. I just saw that. My apologies. Any public comment concerning the annexation? Okay, moving on. Morning.
As I get set up here, I'd like to extend a happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Good morning. David B. Craft with the Bureau of Development Review. We have two projects on the agenda for you this morning. The first project is Carroll Highlands Self-Storage, file number S-24-0018. To give, well, before I get into it, we do have a couple representatives of the project here with us. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Thank you. Good morning. Kelly Schaefer Miller, 73, East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland 21157. I'm here today on behalf of the contract purchaser and developer of this property.
Rick Williams, 192 East Bain Street, Westminster 21157. I'm with development design consultants representing the contract purchaser of the property.
Good morning. Scott Cooper, 622 Bay Shore Drive, Osprey, Florida, and I am the contract purchaser.
And what this project is proposing is an internal self-storage facility. This site might actually ring a bell with a few of the commission members. We had a previous rendition of this proposal back in 2023. And I'll get into what the differences are as we move through this proposal. So for those who may not remember, all the way back two years ago, this is proposed down in the Eldersburg area. You can see these four highlighted parcels here, right along Maryland Route 26. Right here is Carroll Highlands Road. And then if you follow this east, you will get to the reservoir, give or take, in this area. If you look at the properties, you can see that they do adjoin an existing neighborhood. But this red shown on here, this red shade, is indicative of a commercial zoning district. So the property is mostly zoned commercial medium, which is C-2. You do see that a portion of that easternmost parcel right here is zoned residentially, which is R 20,000. And before I get any further, this project is before the Planning and Zoning Commission as a concept plan. We're not looking for any final approvals with this presentation to the commission. However, as with any site plan that comes before you, the Planning and Zoning Commission does have the right to delegate final approval to the chair. So in total, these properties create about three and a quarter acres. And then if we zoom in on the properties here, so looking at how everything exists today, you can see that there are some structures that exist on the property. So there is a, a white house here, which I believe is vacant. There is a former business here, which again, I believe is also vacant. And then if I'm not mistaken, there's also a structure in the woods here. If you look on the property, you can see that there are two existing access points, one to Maryland Route 26, one of them being here, and the other one being here for the house. And there is one existing access point to Carroll Highlands Road, which is shown here. There are no streams on the property. There is no FEMA 100-year floodplain designations on the property. And the property and the adjoining properties are all served by public water and sewer. This property is also in the Freedom Priority Funding area as well as the growth area. So moving forward, as far as what is being proposed, is a 30,000 square foot, a three-story internal self-storage facility. Now, if you recall from your memory, the previous rendition of this plan was about five stories tall. So this is shorter than that previous. So this is shorter than that previous rendition of the plan. This plan was initially submitted to Carroll County September of last year, so 2024. And then if you're looking, the building itself is shown midway between those four properties. There is parking associated with those, with this use shown in between the building and Maryland 26. And there is one single access to the property, which is from Maryland 26. Note that the access to the property from Carroll Highlands that's existing is to be removed. So there is going to be no access to this new use from Carroll Highlands Road. To the east of the property, you can see these features here. This is for stormwater management. This will capture the runoff from this new impervious and will discharge down to an existing drain system along Maryland 26. There is a planned major street of ride and hour extended that cuts through the property that is shown down here. One thing I do want to note is that this roadway, although shown on the plan, is not being constructed with this plan. This is a planned major street that is in the Carroll County Master Plan and is to help alleviate some of the traffic that is along Maryland 26. But this is not to be constructed with this plan. What is being illustrated here is that there is some configuration of roadway that can be built that is not impacted by this proposed use. So what we at Carroll County were making sure is that this new building, parking structure, and associated stormwater management facilities are not going to inhibit the future construction of that roadway. As you can see, it cuts through some of the adjoining residential properties here. That is not an approved alignment by any means. Just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that this alignment, although shown in this configuration, is not by any means a done deal, hasn't been approved or ready for construction or anything of that nature. Along those same lines, you can see a portion of that is shown on this property and this grading here. And along with that, in this darker grading, this is the associated stormwater management for this portion of roadway on the property. So moving forward, if we look at some of the internals and externals of what's being proposed, so this project is proposing six hundred and fifty internal units. If you recall, again, the previous rendition of this plan was over nine hundred units. So a substantial drop from what was previously proposed, and that's indicative of the, the drop in height as well, obviously. There's some square footage that's no longer there. Looking at the, the elevations that have been provided within the plan set, so you can see the property is on a hill. So if you're standing on Maryland 26, the property is kind of on a pedestal. You know, it's obviously higher than the roadway. And to try to counteract that as best as possible, you can see the contours shown here. But then you can also see that the building is being constructed into the hillside. So trying, trying to combat the, the contours of the existing land, the developer is proposing to, to build partial into the hillside to, to try to remove some of that height. And then, so with the previous rendition, a lot of the concerns we received from the public was in reference to how tall the structure is in comparison to some of the existing structures in the area. So as part of this proposed development, it was requested to provide a, a drawing that gives an idea, because this is helpful for understanding how tall the building is going to be and how the exterior may look. But it's not so helpful when you're trying to compare it to some of the existing structures. With that request, the developer, or I'm sorry, the engineer did provide this drawing here, which is a, which is to show the proposed building, shown as the square here, as it relates to the existing vegetation in the area, as well as the existing structures in the area. So if you're familiar with this, this area, you have Carroll Highlands Road, which this property adjoins. And then opposite of that, you have a commercial office over here. If you follow this straight down, this is the, the general height of that existing office as it relates to this proposed structure. And then if you follow this east, you have these existing residences located over here. Again, if you follow that straight down, you can see the comparison of the height of the building, as well as the contours of the area. You can see again that this property is kind of on a pedestal. A freestanding sign is also proposed. So this is the, the sign that was provided within the plan set. The height of this proposed sign is shown as being sixteen feet, seven inches. And then again, just looking at the sign, obviously, you can see that it has a green background with white lettering and is on a gray pole. Also provided in the plan is landscaping that's being proposed in conjunction with this development. So that was another concern that was received by a lot of members of the public is how this will be looked at from their residences, as well as the roadway. So this plan shows the existing vegetation that is to remain, as well as the supplementation of vegetation that's to be planted. So looking at these, I guess these black waves here, this is illustrating the vegetation that is to remain on the property. And then the planting shown on the south of the building, as well as the north of the building along Maryland Route 26, show the planting that is being proposed. And then there is additional landscaping that's shown speckled in this area as well. And again, this is helpful, but having something a little cleaner to look at was requested from the engineer. And so it was provided that this shows the improvements in the area as they relate to the vegetation in the area as well. So the green highlight shown throughout is the vegetation after construction of this facility as it relates to where all the improvements are on this property, as well as the adjoining properties. One thing I want to call attention to is, again, this feature over here relates to the stormwater management for the future roadway. This future roadway is not being constructed at this time. It's unclear when or if that future roadway will be constructed. With that, the vegetation that's existing in this area will not be removed as part of this plan. So this green highlight should be extended over to this area here. And if we go back, this black dotted line shows the limit of disturbance for this proposed development. So this dotted line here is the extent of the trees or vegetation that's going to be removed with this development. So just, it's a little confusing on this plan, because this is the end build-out, per se. But this facility is not being constructed, and so the vegetation in this area is to remain. And then following through, there is a photometric plan that shows the proposed lights that's, that's being proposed with this development. So if you look at this plan, it's kind of hard to see with all the numbers on here. But there is one freestanding light that's proposed at the entrance into, into the facility. The plans show that height being fifteen feet tall. There's also building-mounted lights shown only on the front of the building, and those are shown by these, these black features here on the front of the building. And those have a mounting height from the ground up about seven, seven to eight feet. So you can see that there are no lights proposed on the building, on either side of the building, or the rear of the building. All lights are proposed in the front of the building, as well as the one, which is for the parking area and the entrance into the site. So going back to just a plan that may be a little bit easier to see. This project was brought before the Design and Architectural Review Committee, which is an advisory group to meet and discuss this plan. That happened July of 2025. The only comment that they relayed was they proposed maximum landscaping and screening was recommended to acknowledge the viewscape for passing motorists. So the landscaping plan, which is up on the screen here, has received concept approval. So this does meet the requirements of our landscape manual, at least conceptually. But they, the Design and Architectural Review Committee requested, or they recommended, maximum screening to try to help that viewship. The project was brought before the Technical Review Committee meeting in October of 2024. I, I believe there's a typo in the report, but it was October 28th, 2024. It was brought before the Technical Review Committee meeting. During the meeting, there were citizens that signed in, and they did relay concerns of additional traffic, as well as stormwater management from this project. State Highway Administration is a part of this review. So Maryland 26 is a state roadway, it is not a county roadway. So obviously, they have an involvement in this review. They did not require a traffic impact study associated with this. And because this does not, it does not have the trip generation requiring county involvement, or, you know, county roadway involvement, there is no traffic impact study from the county side as well. The requirements of forest conservation were adequate for concept approval, but additional information is going to be needed on the final plan. Forest conservation is going to be addressed via off-site banking. So there's not going to be any forest conservation easements proposed on this property. Utilities, which is for water and sewer, and the Office of Public Safety have granted concept approval. Without any streams or waterways on the property, floodplain management and water resource management have granted concept approval as well. Concept stormwater management approval has been granted. As mentioned, we have these three facilities east of the building, which are going to capture all of that storm runoff and divert it to the existing drainage in the Maryland 26 area. The Bureau of Comprehensive Planning determined that the proposed plan is consistent with the 2018 Freedom Comprehensive Master Plan, land use designation of commercial medium, as well as with the water and sewer master plan. Because of the, the bicycle pedestrian master plan, sidewalk is shown, go to our earlier plan set here, so sidewalk is shown adjoining Maryland 26. So a five-foot concrete sidewalk is proposed along 26 to comply with the bike ped plan. And finally, as with every state plan, this plan will be tested and reviewed for adequacy of public facilities before being brought back for final approval.
I have two questions. What's going to happen to the, with the proposed future roadway, the property below that? Is that just going to be grass, or, I mean?
Forested.
Is it going to be used for anything?
You mean the portion of that, that end lot there?
Below where the proposed road may or may not be?
We're not doing anything with that right now.
Yeah, that will remain existing conditions, which is currently pretty well-forested.
Station?
I think it's forested now.
It has existing.
Okay. My last question is, the sixteen-foot sign, is that similar to the other signage along that road? Or is it higher?
That is an excellent question, and I think Rick took, took a look at it, and I will speak.
I took a look at when we did the Liberty Car Wash, and I think we were about pretty close to the height on that.
It seems pretty high. I'm not sure it's necessary to be that high, but as long as there's, you know, as long as there's other ones there already, then it's, it's not as important. But if that's the highest, maybe we want to reconsider that.
Mr. Soys and I did, but we, I looked at the sign we did. That's where I got the height, was from the one we did for Liberty Car Wash, which was just pretty recently approved.
The Liberty Car Wash is between this site and then the former mall site. So that's really the, most recently approved commercial site within the vicinity here.
We'll, we'll take a look at it, and we, if it's. We're flexible with that.
I'm always against high signs. You may as well know that right from the beginning.
We believe it's consistent, but we will review and confirm.
Mike?
So I was looking at the, the minutes and the notes from the, gosh, this was way back in 2022. The, this first came around, and there's some, a new developer and engineer for this time around.
Yes, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I was going to mention that. I just wanted to clarify that this is a new developer from the previously submitted site plan. And this did, this developer did also have the opportunity of appearing in one of Commissioner Rothstein's town halls as well, prior to this submittal. So he has had a large opportunity to engage with the surrounding community. They have also been present at the zoning administrator hearing as well, and they've all been in direct contact with him. He's been very forthcoming with providing his personal cell phone number to everyone. So there have been a lot of accommodations to the plan that you've seen from its initial submittal to try to address some of those concerns. And happy to walk through those and answer any questions that you all have, but wanted to point that out.
So that's what I wanted to just comment about, the, the, the changes from the original plan. Very noticeable, and I'm sure appreciated by the community, hopefully. The one, one question I had was, in the initial plan, it called for twenty thousand four hundred square foot construction. This plan calls for thirty thousand square feet. So that's, that's fifty percent larger than your original building plan, which was five stories. So is this a wider footprint? Talk, talk to me about how that's larger square footage.
It's, it's wider, but we needed less, a lot, we don't, didn't need the parking. I don't think that, I don't want to try to say this nicely. I, I think they had, it was way overparked, so we have less parking on our facility, which is where some of the building size went. So we're, they had, if it was twenty thousand, they had five floors, it was a hundred. So we're around ninety thousand with three stories.
So you went flatter, wider, and took up some parking space.
And Mr. Cooper does this, this is pretty much almost all he does, and he owns and maintains some of them, and he recognizes the need for parking. And I looked at a couple of the sites I did, they're just, the code unfortunately didn't really take that into account that we didn't need. We have, we received a variance in February, I think it was, for reduction in parking. But anyway, that's where some of this, the building went.
Yeah, the code allows one for every ten, is it ten or twelve base, or whatever?
So I, I actually, I wanted to get into that too, and I appreciate bringing up that variant. So because this is an internal self-storage facility, so there's two different code calculations. One that's internal like this, where everything is in one building. And then you have the other, which is more of what people think of when you think of self-storage, where you have the drive aisles and everything. So for a facility such as this, where everything is internal, it is one space for every ten storage bays, plus two for the employee parking, and three for customer parking located near the business office. So per this calculation, and with the six hundred and fifty units, seventy parking spaces were required, per the code. As mentioned, there was a case made before the zoning administrator to drop that requirement down to nine parking spaces. And that variance was approved by the zoning administrator. So they are showing nine parking spaces in conjunction with this plan.
Which I'll just point out briefly, was a greater ratio than the plan previous to this one.
this one. Um, and obviously there was a full case put on related to that, but I think what Mr. Williams was getting at is just that the code hasn't necessarily caught up with the cultural changes, really, and most people recognize that and that was recognized during the hearing. Um, so that was the resulting approval of the parking variance requested.
And is there a dock with this new, uh, new plan?
Yes, there are.
Two docks?
Interior loading area that the trucks actually pull inside of the building.
Okay.
In addition to the parking spaces.
Obviously elevators.
Yes, sir.
More than one elevator?
Two.
Okay.
Hospital-sized elevators.
Okay. All right, any other, tell me about any other changes that were made as a result of the flatter, wider construction concept.
Well, we were able, I mean, should I speak?
Yeah.
So we were able to obviously drop the height by doing, I think the other place was, uh, the previous facility was going to not go into the, we've spent more money to remove dirt from the site so we can actually lower the height of the building.
What's, what's the total height of the building compared to the old, old, uh, plan?
Uh, I think they were at 55 or so feet from the old plan, uh, from the rear. If you're from the neighborhood, which I really tried to focus on with our parapet, uh, which is, uh, four feet, we're 20, a little less than 24 feet high from where the neighborhood is. And then the front is 37 feet is, because it comes in, slopes into like, you're building in like a, a walkout basement type of situation almost. So that, that's basically our height. So we've reduced it as much as we could for, uh, visual for the neighborhood. And that was one of their biggest concerns.
Yes, no question.
So this, is this accessible 24/7?
No, sir.
Okay, so?
No, it's open, uh, you have access from 6:30, uh, to 10:00 PM. And then after that, the, everyone has their own code, uh, their own private code. Uh, Extra Space, which is the largest, uh, self-storage management company i- in the world, uh, they manage for us our facilities across the United States and, uh, that's, that's how they work. Uh, they, they, they shut everything down at 10 o'clock.
So it's single access to it or it's multiple access to the building?
One access point through the loading area.
One access point.
Yep, you, you pull your truck in or your car in and you're, uh, underneath.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve? Steve? Commissioner?
Well, I guess, I will ask you, is this concrete tilt? What do we, concrete panels? Is this aluminum? What's, what's the material?
It is going to be, uh, the facade will be EFS, drive it, if you call it that. That's what it'll be with masonry along the front, uh, on the lower portion, uh, to give it a little, to break it up.
Okay. Any thing at all? Okay.
We, Mr. Chair, if I may, we would request that the planning commission grant the chair the authority to approve the final site plan, um, if you're willing to do so. Obviously we are here and happy to answer any additional questions that any community members have as well. We had a very good discussion with many of them during, uh, the parking variance hearing, which was really just, uh, focused, I would say, on questions related to the site design. So if there are any additional questions that anyone has that are well-suited to us, we're happy to answer those today.
Okay. Before I open a public hearing testimony, um, if you are looking to sign in, if you're looking to speak, you must have signed in. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. It is not a question and answer session. Questions can be directed to staff after the meeting and if there is anyone that fails to comply with these rules, I can call the person out of order and may require him or her to leave the building. I will note that we have received three letters from citizens since the beginning of August. So with that being said, are there anyone that would like to speak? Please make sure you give your address and speak clearly.
Good morning. Um, who's driving this, the slideshow? David, can you go to the?
Excuse me, can you give your address and name?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Sarah Penn. My address is 6504 Panorama Drive. David, can you drive to the one that shows the height between the houses? Perfect, thank you so much. So I, um, I'm at the house that the roadway is through that's proposed, um, that was proposed three years ago. I always get very upset. I have a nine-year-old and.
Take a minute.
We sit in our backyard and I have one of those little intex pools and the majority of the time it's just her and I. I'm a single mom. Um, I bought my house in 2020. I'm an orphan, I have a very sad backstory and I was really excited to have a home. And seeing the road and her seeing the road brings her to tears every single time. But beyond that, because I know we always say the road's not going to happen, look at that. Look at me at the bottom of that hill and then look at what I'm going to look at out of my backyard. I'm going to look at a massive structure. We have deer and we have foxes and we have groundhogs and we enjoy that. I bought where I bought because I liked the idea of a dead-end street and I grew up in Laurel and I didn't want to live in an area like Laurel. It's not what I wanted when I came to Carroll County. And I want to call out that I think calling the other structures that are around us commercial is a little bit misleading. So the very small property that's behind me directly was a home and it was lived in. People lived there when I bought my house. Um, the white house on the property, they sold Christmas trees there for two months. Um, and the brown building is a single-story building. Um, the title company that is on Carroll Highlands is a single-story building. The kitchen design store across the street is a remodeled home. So this is very much a residential community on all three sides. Um, I will also tell you that, you know, myself, I have a sinkhole in my backyard. There is six ton of rock in it already that I have filled myself. Um, I have spent $40,000 on water remediation and that's before this massive building goes on the property and causes more flooding. Um, I have not spoken with Scott. I have not. Nobody in my neighborhood has. And I can tell you at the meeting, uh, last year or two years ago, there was well over a hundred of us that were against, against this. And it's not because we're against a storage facility, we're against it in our residential community. That's nothing but one and two-story homes. We walk our kids, we go see our neighbors. I guess that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any?
Hi, Andrew Sims, 6711 Carroll Highlands Road. Um, I will be less directly impacted, um, but for people like Sarah, how is that just and fair? You are our commissioners. We as citizens and the ones who vote for you have repeatedly come up with this. We have sued. We have put law, we have actually proven that the one stretch of land and they're requiring a variance on that to be because it is residential and we have said we are not interested in this particular property. I try to be growth-oriented. I don't, I'm not saying that that property can't be developed, but this is not the right plan. This is not the right business and we need to have common sense and you as our voted commissioners need to protect the citizenry, not corporate interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would like to point out that we are not voted commissioners. We are citizens who do give our time to volunteer for these commu- committees. So, um, there's, with the exception of Commissioner Gordon.
And I know that commissioners are paid. So it's not volunteering if you're paid as a commissioner.
Okay. It, yeah.
That's not a volunteer position.
Excuse me, that's enough. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm vertically challenged. Good morning. Thank you for hearing us. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Audrey Novak. I live at 6505 Carroll Highlands Road. I've lived there for 35 years. I'm the little pink house two, two down on that one, um, slide that we showed. Right now, a big concern, a big, big concern, and even this morning coming here, pulling out of Carroll Highlands Road, um, the difficult traffic situation there, um, really hits home to me. If you, if you come from, if you're coming west on Liberty Road, there's a, a slight topographical change where Liberty Road sort of swings a little bit to the left and as a result of that, the turning lane, which this would be used for the turning lane to make the left turn into this facility is so narrow, it's much more narrow than most turning lanes. I have a RAV4, my car barely fits in that, in that turning lane. So that's a big concern. And when I looked at the, um, at the plans, there's even a five-foot bike lane proposed there. So that's even going to change, um, the traffic pattern there. It is a dangerous place for such a, a massive, um, business to be put there. And regarding ride and hour way, as, as I was listening to you speak, it really saddened me that you accommodated for this business structure and not for the people who will be impacted if and when ride and hour way goes through. My immediate next-door neighbor who couldn't be here today because she's away, it goes right through her bedroom, that road. No accommodation at all for those of us who have lived there for almost 40 years, but yet we're, we can accommodate this business going there anew. You addressed the building height, that was good. I have a concern about, on the plans, it talks about relocation of the electrical lines. They run right behind my house. How disruptive is that going to be to me as a resident to have, you know, will we be without power for a while? Will there be, is it going to be underground? Is it going to be above the ground? You know, what's going to happen with these electrical lines? So that, that's a concern. You explained the lighting, that's good. As far as the sign, to compare the section we're talking about, the neighborhoods that we're talking about to the car wash that's up right near, um, what used to be the, the mall, you're, you're apples and oranges. If you drive Liberty Road, well, one more statement, just because we can doesn't mean we should.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kathy Martin. I live at 6405 Locust Lane. Um, Locust Lane is directly across from Carroll Highlands, so, um, our neighborhood has one road in and one road out and that is Locust Lane. All of the homes that feed in my, in my community enter and exit at, uh, near this, uh, proposed property. I've lived on Locust Lane since 1990, so also 35 years this year. The traffic is my number one concern as well. Turning safely out from Locust Lane, both in the left and right direction, left being eastbound, right being westbound, is a very dangerous proposition today. Currently, uh, Andrea mentioned that the, we have the very wonky expansion from one lane to two lanes in the westbound direction. I implore you to travel eastbound and try to make a left on Locust Lane and the traffic appears to be coming directly at you with the way that the lanes are configured and that center lane is slightly angled. My car alerts me that there's an oncoming vehicle every time I turn left into Locust Lane. It's very unusual, it's very narrow. And so the crux of my comments are to really urge and implore you to require a traffic study, not only for the volume of traffic, but for the safety of the current existing lane structure and the impact of adding a business that now in this new plan ingresses and egresses completely from Maryland Route 26. This is a change. I do believe it is a change that should require very strong consideration of a Maryland state, uh, traffic plan. So that is the bottom line for my comments in case my time runs out. Um, I did some research and recommended improvements to Maryland 26 have been proposed since the 1960s. When I moved in more recently with the very brand-new Oklahoma Road Middle School, we had an amazing presentation by the state of all of the improvements that could occur along Maryland 26, including islands and trees and sidewalks and all of the things that any pedestrian-friendly, traffic-friendly community would include. And none of that has occurred. So since 1962, the original kind of Freedom Area Plan, nothing has occurred to improve the safety, the pedestrian friendliness, um, and the traffic flow of our, of our community. We know that 40% of the residents in Carroll County are driving in and out of the county. And I'm going to just finish up by saying that in the last four and a half weeks, we've had two fatal accidents in the Freedom Area. Four and a half weeks, two fatal vehicular accidents. This is very important to me.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good morning, representatives. Thank you very much for taking the time to do this.
Um, I am not as impacted as Sarah. Um, I live on.
Excuse me, can you give your name and address?
Yes, my name is Eric Campos. I live on 2108 Liberty Lake Drive, Sykesville, Maryland. And it's, so it's not quite as impacted as her, but I have an equal concern about this. And I would like to bring up, um, if you're going to encroach and have something within a residential area, what is the benefit to the residents? Because you can hear from a lot of my, uh, fellow residents that we don't see the benefit, we don't want this and we have several concerns, you know? So I have to, I have to assume that it's to, to bring in other people from outside of our immediate area to enjoy this facility. We wouldn't be using it and yet it's on, it encroaches on where we are. That to me is a big sign that it could increase, uh, crime, which we've already seen spiking. There's been, you know, stolen, uh, vehicles and, and thefts in our area, which haven't been seen for a couple of years. And, and another thing that I would like to point out is that I haven't seen it, haven't had engagement to, about this property. I don't believe Sarah mentioned that she's been engaged actively. Uh, you made a comparison to the car wash sign. That's a very, it's much further and I believe much smaller than that. So I think that was patently unsure what you mentioned about that, but I'm not accusing anybody. But what I would also say is that there needs to be, you know, a real traffic study as well. There's school buses, it's a lot of congregation right there, it could cause a lot of issues as well. But what's more, there's a, there's a 30 storage units within 15 miles of where this is. So how can you claim that there's a real need for it when there's a proxy, uh, another solution that's right there? My big thing is that this is Carroll County, it's Sykesville. You know, we want, residents who live here want space, autonomy, and this is kind of a slap in the face of that. And, um, I would ask you to please uphold, you know, our rights as residents and people in this community instead of kowtowing to, uh, not to be conspiratorial, but peo- kind of like a, a commercial, um, engine coming in and kind of innovating this area. instead of kowtowing to, not to be conspiratorial, but kind of like a commercial engine coming in and kind of innovating this area. There's certainly spaces in Eldersburg for such a solution, but it's not right within a residential area where it's going to disrupt traffic, possibly increase crime. There's a water issue as well. My residence, right next to my neighbor, creates, has a river every time it rains. With this pass, we were really threatened with flooding. And you want to put in this new unit that's going to definitely increase that. And I haven't seen the numbers, but I, I'm dubious to think that, you know, you're really taking the measures that account for overflow of this area, of this water into our areas. She's already had flooding as well. So that's pretty much all I have. I'm vehemently against it. Other members of our community are. And we ask you to please uphold our goals and wanting to keep this area, you know, kind of spacious and in keeping with the residential aesthetic and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. Kelly, Benny?
Thank you.
I see you.
Just, just briefly on a few things. I just want to point out, and I think everyone's aware, and David stated it in his staff report, but this use is not a big trip generator. To trigger a traffic impact analysis, one must generate 20-plus trips per peak hour. So we did not even approach that threshold to require the traffic impact study. This plan has also been thoroughly reviewed by State Highway Administration to date and will have to be finally approved by State Highway. But that's really the impetus for some of the improvements to Maryland Route 26 is based on their review and comments and requirements. It was, it was a concern of the neighborhood to have access to the site onto Carroll Highlands. So the access onto Liberty Road was kind of a fought-after thing with S H A to be able to provide for this so that we could eliminate that access onto Carroll Highlands. So that's why you see the plan with the access as it's provided for today. We also hope that the stormwater management design of this, first of all, I will point out that this plan has undergone some changes as a result of some of the neighborhood concerns. For example, the facilities were put underground because there were some concerns about flooding and such from neighborhood that we had heard. And so cha, changes were made. And it has gone through and will continue to go through a rigorous stormwater management review process. But I think that, I'll just say that bringing the site up to modern-day standards, if anything, could have a positive impact to the existing site. Take that as you will. The, I, I think it's been made clear, and I know David went into some detail in Ridenhour Way and the roadway that's proposed, that, we are not proposing the roadway. I think you all know that, but I just want to clarify that that is a county master-planned road. So therefore, we have shown it on our plan. If one day it gets constructed, the county will be constructing it. It's my understanding that there's no immediate plans for that because the county is not intending, and, you know, things could change, but as of now, it's my understanding that the county is not intending on trying to exercise eminent domain to take any of these houses or take any of the land necessary to complete it. That is why it's not being constructed at this point in time. Because if we constructed it on our site, it would just be a segment in the middle of nothing. So if and when that becomes feasible, we have shown that it can happen on this site and that the building is not preventing it from happening in this alignment. But it is not our proposal and we are not constructing it. So right now, that area that's being shown for both the roadway and the accompanying stormwater for the roadway will stay with trees and landscaping. And it will, it will create a nice buffer. And if and when the county wants to go forward with that construction, I think that will be a long time in the future. But if and when that happens, they will have to go through the necessary process to facilitate that.
Kelly, I don't want to interrupt you here, but maybe David could answer this. What's the purpose of this proposed road in the future? What was the purpose of it? What, what would it do to improve what? And is it, I mean?
Yeah, I can jump in here. There are a number of road connections that are proposed and have been proposed for a long time in the Freedom Plan that would basically create a redundant network to 26 so that people could move through the area without having to get onto Maryland 26. So there are lots of different segments that would sort of parallel 26. Ridenhour, Ridenhour on the south side and Dickinson on the north side of 26. So that was kind of the purpose.
Would that road increase, I mean, I know this is all hypothetical at this point, but would that road then increase the traffic through those neighborhoods? And if that's the case, I think we ought to put a footnote here and say, what, what's going on with this proposed road? I'm a little concerned about that in the future. The other thing I want to ask about is, there was a lot of concern about security at this facility. What kind of security do you have? You have cameras? You have fence, fencing around it? Is there, is it limited access for the patrons only or is it open access? I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay, I can easily explain that. We spend anywhere between $130,000 and $150,000 on our security system. We have cameras around the whole building on the outside and every corridor on the inside. It's only, you only have access if you have your own personal code into this facility. So it's not open to the public in any shape or form.
Okay.
And as I mentioned earlier, the, the hours are not 24/7.
Excuse me. It, it's not, if you want to talk, you can come to a microphone.
Andrew Sims again, 6711 Carroll Highlands. If we can go back to the height variance photo, if there's cameras on that building and there's people living behind them, where are those cameras pointed? It's a clear intrusion of privacy.
They're pointed straight down along the building is how we do it.
But then how's that catching people using the building for going, sneaking into the neighborhood if that's our concern? That they're not ca, they're either, the cameras are either non-functional or they're invading privacy. That's why this doesn't make sense on this lot. Because you can't put in the right security measures. You can't do those things without infract, impacting the rights of the citizenry.
Yeah, I, I will say that majority of commercial buildings do not take broad cameras around everywhere. It's simply their premise and it's looked down because of the respect for neighbors. So I would think that the cameras that look down also probably look maybe the distance of the parking lot as well. They're pretty sophisticated. So.
The rear of the site is screened and there's fencing that is going to go, right?
And there's trees, I mean, all the natural trees are staying. And then we're adding trees to the back per some of the neighbors that asked us to do that, so we have. And I just want to mention, I've been doing this 34 years. I mean, between the five of us, we've built 500 of these around the United States. So we try to do as much as we can to fit into the neighborhood and do the right thing. And, you know, so I'm open to suggestions all the time on how to make it better.
So the back landscaping, what, when you put trees in, what, what size?
They're going to be 14 feet high, those trees, when they go into the ground, they'll be 14 feet.
And then the side that would adjoining Panorama, for instance, what?
Well, there's a lot of existing forests there. So we want, we, we asked the county to leave the existing forests because it just made more sense to leave natural forest there than not.
Okay.
So there are a lot of mature trees on that side.
Okay.
And in Lot 19, we're not touching, and that's, you know, basically trees.
And just for clarity, Lot 19 is the westernmost property. So this property here is Lot 19.
Okay. All right. Sarah?
Thank you. I promise I won't cry this time, maybe. So I did have a couple of things I wanted to say. So the whole backside of Panorama, we have power lines that run that are close enough that BG&E can just come and access them whenever they want, which is allowed. So a lot of the existing trees there have already very much been cleared out by BG&E because you can't have them that close to the power lines. And when I tell you that the hill is extreme, it is very extreme. So another concern that I have is if we're leaving all of these trees and one of them does fall down, because I've had them fall on my property, how are we going to be able to access them to remove them from BG&E? Are we moving those power lines? Is BG&E going to move those? Is that part of this? Because you're not going to be able to access it at this point. And another statement that I wanted to make is that this property was not always zoned this way. So I just want to point that out, that this, this property was not always zoned to handle this size of a commercial building. I, I don't know why that feels important, but it does. It wasn't always zoned this way. It wasn't zoned to hold these massive, massive commercial buildings. And to Scott's point, I've gone through your gallery of, of projects. The one in Wilmington is very much like in a residential area, but it's also on a four-lane highway, maybe six-lane highway. And it was commercial use previously, like large commercial use. There was another one in a neighborhood that had a church on it, and you guys tore the church down and put the, the storage unit there. But those were already big commercial properties. This, this is not that. This is a neighborhood, like where the kids all get together and ride rollerblades and do sidewalk chalk. We all know each other and, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Martin, just wanted to actually springboard off of what you were saying. So I pointed out to Mr. Beecroft in 2023 in the fall that this particular type of structure actually is not allowed in other Maryland counties to be on C2 zone land. In Prince George's County, they stated and have an ordinance where this particular type of structure, tens of thousands of square foot of storage, only can be on industrial land. And we all really strongly believe that that would be a much more appropriate location for this type of structure. To me, it's shocking. I mean, I, I would agree, if I was on your board, it would be shocking to me to see the elevations, the little teeny house, the big high building. You will never see the sunset. You will have multiple hours of additional shade on their properties, on the backs of their properties. So I think that illustration actually didn't do anybody any favors in the development world because it is so overtly obvious how big this building is going to be compared to the private home down the hill, the private homes down the hill, the, even comparing it to the title company that's across the street. So I just wanted to bring up, number one, that PG County doesn't even allow this in their C2 zoned. It's only industrial. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kathy just brought up a good point. So the other thing that I'm now going to be concerned about is I have solar panels from Tesla and so do two of my neighbors. And contractually, if we don't generate a certain amount of electricity, we get sued. So is somebody going to absorb the cost of those from, from us for, for Tesla so that we don't get sued because we're not going to get the required sun now because there's going to be a monstrosity blocking our sunshine? That would, that would stink. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Happy to answer any questions that the commission has as a result of any of these comments.
Okay. All right, this is, go.
My final comment at least. Once again, I just want to state, I'm not against developing this land, and it is an awkward place with the hill. But this should be a single story that fits in. It could be doctor's offices or a small strip mall with three or four businesses. But being 30 feet towering over the neighborhood and being an edifice to corporate greed is not the right place for this, not in Carroll County. That should be an industrial lot, as everyone else has said. But I do, I want to see development, but I want to see smart growth. Not, this is the easy plan. This is somebody who wants to do this. Let's take their money. Let's do something that keeps the citizens happy. Let's keep something that builds the community.
Okay. Anything further?
I'll state this, even though I think everybody here knows this, that this use is zoned for this request by right. It's a principal permitted use. And if this commission will recall, as a result of the previous proposed development, there was actually a text amendment to the code to accommodate some concerns related to height. So this property, these properties were impacted by that text amendment. And that has been something that this current development has had to deal with and I think actually is even still lower in height than the code allows for. And so that has really been taken into consideration despite, I, I'm, I hear all the concerns that have been expressed here today. But I will say to you that the, we truly feel that the rear elevation especially, which is what will be visible to some of the neighbors, will not appear higher than a lot of the surrounding houses. You heard Mr. Cooper testify to the height of that, and it is below, well below the requirements. So I just, I, I do want to point that out and I don't want to, I, I understand that there are concerns and I'm not trying to go back and forth on all of those concerns, but I just wanted to point that one thing out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Well, I think, I think with regard to delegating approval to the, to you, Madam Chair, I, I would say no, given the, the feedback we've heard here today. And, you know, this has been a hot issue for, since 2022. That said, I, I, I would like to recognize that, that the developer and the engineer, and obviously the owner, they have to be involved in these conversations with you guys, have demonstrated a willingness to change and, and adapt and adopt different plans and, and all that. So I, you know, I think that's great. I would, I would ask the community here today and those that couldn't be here today to take advantage of communicating with these folks to express your opinions even further or have some ideas because they're, they've shown they're, they're willing to work. They've lowered the height. They, they've changed a bunch of this from the plan we saw in 2022, a bunch of things. So I, but I, back to the original comment, I would say that we do not delegate this to you for final approval today.
Thank you. And it will most probably come to you. So there you go.
Thanks. Yeah.
In the future.
I would ask about 26, and particularly as you exit this property and we head east towards the reservoir. It looks like the road tapers pretty significant.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty quickly. Is there any way to put in an XL or extend that improvement a little further as you travel east? Are we getting, I, I know we're getting into the purview of the Maryland State Highway Administration. And so that probably opens up a whole can of worms. But the, you know, then the, the community is going to be appalled at what I'm about to say. I mean, the, the truth is, is I want fewer curb cuts on 26. And the truth is, is we've consolidated two, maybe three down to one, so we've achieved that. But if anything, I, I would love to see this thing moved, that, that entrance exit moved as far to the right as we can. But I, I don't know the distance between your entrance and the road that's further west. But the great, the greater the distance we can have there, I think the safer we make that, that traffic flow. But again, this is, I'm getting into, you know, this is your site plan, you know, this is the state, you know, highway administration. I, I'm just asking the questions because 26- you know, Highway Administration. I, I'm just asking the questions because twenty-six, you know, Ms. Martin's right, we've, we've had several fatalities. There's some road improvements that were supposed to take place down by Nell's Acre that were never done. The county is supposed to be doing some stuff down there. We've never appropriated the money that was supposed to be spent down there to improve that area. And that's, that's a misstatement. Uh, this, it's, the, there's, right now our way was supposed to be improved, you know, down there by Nell's Acres. Um, and the church that's down there. But, um, that's a, that's a separate conversation. I'm just wondering, is there anything else we can do on twenty-six to make it a little safer? And, you know, Kelly, I, you know, that opens up a whole can of worms for the state Highway Administration. I'm just, I'm just asking the question because again, it's, the, the, there's a lot going on here that y'all, you know, you're not generating the traffic trips. We get it, you know? But, but everything we do on twenty-six is just, there's a cumulative effect here that's pretty negative. So anything we can do, um, I encourage you to kind of think about it.
We will certainly take a look at that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Don't, um, these L and XL things, don't they typically cut into the property and not, I mean, and add to the, um, roadway?
Yes.
So, um, while it impacts the state, it's going to be coming from the front of your property.
Right.
So, um...
Well, I think it'd be in there right away.
Yeah, usually it's with, it depends, but usually it's within the state's right-of-way, so that's part of how the state
Right.
Right.
Controls.
Yeah. Okay, I, I would, um, suggest as you continue to look at this and the community talks that you look more, I know you're already doing a lot of landscaping, but specifically to the, I guess, east side. Look at, at raising that side up as well as far as more landscape. So... Anything further? One more time.
Audrey Novak, um, as someone, again, who has lived right there for thirty-five years, and actually my husband's car was totaled one time pulling out of, out of Carroll Highlands Road. With the diminishing of the number of parking spaces, I mean, I'm envisioning in my head someone trying to pull into the lot, and there are no spaces, and they're going to stay on Liberty Road and wait there. And also, people traveling eastbound, they race to get in front of people. That's where a lot of accidents have happened. They race to get into the lane that's, that through lane because it narrows into one lane to go over the, over the bridge. It's just, it's just going to be a nightmare, and I, I don't even think the acceleration lane is going to help it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, all right. So, well, um, we will see you back here. And hopefully the community will reach out to you and, um, looks like they would like some more conversation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so what, can I make a comment?
You can.
Well, we have people here. Folks, we're in the middle of a revision of the master plan for the county. As y'all have related, there's some, uh, zoning allowances that we allow in this county. And if you, the, the zoning regulations should reflect what we as citizens want our county to look like. This is an opportunity. You know, Daphne and the staff here, we reach out as, as a group and ask for comments, and believe it or not, it's hard to get comments. It's hard to get people to serve on this. We, we are volunteers. It's hard, we had open seats for a long time. I live in the Freedom District, and I beat the drum to try to get a couple of these seats filled by people who live in the Freedom District and was unable to do it. So, this is an opportunity. This is me asking for your help, asking you to be vocal. You've made a note, you know, uh, should, now, this gentleman's probably, you know, he's going to get grandfathered because this is the regulation we have, and he's doing it in accordance with the regulations that are in place. If you want it changed, you need to make, you, you, we, we need to let our voices be heard. This is an opportunity. So be involved. That's all I'm trying to say while we've got some people here. And I thank you for your input today. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number ten, final subdivision plan. Byron Hills.
What we're going to do now with this particular situation here is, is, is an awful for Phil Hager.
You had to clear a room, Pete.
No worries.
Yeah, that's right.
I have a G, and I'm not saying I'm a...
But it was a very good point you brought up, and it's actually very true.
We, 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 we yell in the wind.
Yeah, okay. All right. Mr. Bee-Craft, you're back with us again.
I sure am. So again, David Bee-Craft with the Bureau of Development Review. The last project we have to discuss this morning is from Byron Hills, file number FX two-two-zero-zero-three. Again, it's a little confusing, so I, I want to try to clarify this again. Technically, the only thing being proposed is the creation of three residential lots. However, the area that's left over there will also be a buildable lot because the property is buildable today. So in total, uh, this plan will result in four residential dwellings. Uh, for those who are unfamiliar with this, uh, this property is along Oklahoma Road, still in the Freedom District. Uh, as you can see, it is highlighted by this blue. And, um, help acquaint those on the commission, right across the street, this large property here, that is the Hobie Wolf property. So if we zoom in on the property, um, the property that we're talking about here, you can see it has this, uh, this weird configuration. Uh, it is currently undeveloped, uh, it's mostly wooded, and there is a, uh, an existing driveway here that feeds this adjoining property. Uh, the property is in the residential twenty thousand zoning districts. Uh, it is about three and three-quarter acres large. Uh, the adjoining properties are also zoned residential, uh, and as you can see, most, if not all of them, are currently developed with, um, private dwellings. The original plan that was proposed, uh, was actually submitted, eh, back in twenty-twenty, so the concept plan for this was submitted in twenty-twenty. Within that plan, there were four lots shown on the plans. Uh, these lots are ranging from about three-quarters of an acre to just shy of one acre. So within the R twenty thousand zoning district, that is roughly a half-acre zoning district, just for clarification. Uh, there is also a parcel that's being created, being proposed here, uh, for stormwater management facilities. And that parcel is just shy of one acre. So all of these proposed lots meet the standard minimum size requirements as lo, as well as the lot width of a hundred feet and, uh, the setback requirements from all necessary property lines. And all of these lots will utilize public water and sewer. As you can see, access to the lots is via this shared driveway. Uh, this driveway is named as Jones Drive, and it is going to encompass where that existing driveway is. So that existing driveway is going to be improved to be, uh, to meet shared driveway or use-in-common driveway standards. Um, and that is going to extend up to, to this area here. So a little bit of history on this. Um, so as I mentioned, it was initially submitted back in twenty-twenty. Uh, it was subject to citizen involvement, uh, at the January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one Technical Room Committee meeting. At that meeting, there were citizens that were in attendance, and they expressed concerns of stormwater management runoff, soil erosion, uh, soil chemical consumption, and school capacity at the meeting. August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, it was first brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission as a concept plan. Uh, again, during this meeting, there were citizens that were, um, at that meeting, and they raised concerns of, again, stormwater runoff, school capacity, uh, as well as the, um, potential impact on, on wildlife in the area. And then most recently, uh, August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, it was brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission as a preliminary plan. Uh, during that meeting, again, citizens were in, uh, attendance, and they raised concerns that were similar to the others, so stormwater management, school capacity. So, uh, stormwater management has issued final approval for this plan. So each of the individual structures are going to have dry wells to capture that runoff from the rooftops. Uh, and then you can also note, this, this plan's a little busy, but there are swales that's being proposed to help divert some of that water away from the adjoining properties and into this facility out front here. So, um, these lines here show the contours from the properties in this area. So properties adjoining in this area are higher than the subject property, so the water is going to flow into the property. Over here, the properties are lower, so a swell is being proposed to help divert that water into the facility. Uh, same thing with this adjoining property here. Uh, a swell is proposed here, as well as a storm drain system to help divert some of that water. Uh, there are no streams or floodplain designations located on site, so water resources, as well as the floodplain management, have granted final approval of the plan. The Health Department and Carroll County Bureau of Utilities have approved the plan with proposed public water and sewer connections. Uh, Engineering Review, as well as State Highway, have both approved the plan as well with the improvements to the existing entrance. In the review of, uh, the plan, the Department of Conference, or, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Conference and Planning determined that the plan use is consistent with the twenty-eighteen Freedom Comprehensive Master Plan Land Use Designation of Residential Medium, as well as with the Water and Sewer Master Plan. As Oklahoma Road is identified as a future sidewalk connection, um, within the Bike Ped Master Plan, a sidewalk is proposed to connect the existing sidewalk north of the site to the existing sidewalk south of the site. So if we go back, you can see that there is existing sidewalk here, there's existing sidewalk here, uh, and this plan is proposing the connection of those two. So with that, uh, staff recommends approval of this final plan, uh, subject to these thirteen conditions. I'm happy to go through those, but I'm happy to pass over those as well. And so before I move on to the concurrency report side of things, I just wanted to see if there is any questions thus far.
David, I asked it before, and I, gentlemen, uh, dense, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say it again. Is there abs, in that Oklahoma and Bennett is a failing intersection, and I'm gonna say that as a statement of fact. I, I think it may be close to failing here, or, you know, whatever. I've been told it's a failing intersection from a traffic standpoint. Is there no way? And, and I think we would prefer, as a county, to have fewer driveways on Oklahoma rather than more. Is there not a way to have this little enclave? And I know you're contained in here, and you don't own the land that I'm asking you to go across. Is there not a way the county can compel a, an access to these lots out the back with the newly completed road on the other side? If you go back to the aerial you just showed, um, and not only that, from a topography standpoint, I, I would think that the slope, I mean, I, I know what the slope is right here, uh, on this, I mean, the grade coming down this driveway is going to be pretty significant. I would think it'd be more gentle if we went out the back to the road that was just completed out the back. Is there no way to compel a connection that, that correction, David?
So that's a, a very interesting question, and I say that because we get a little bit beyond what my purview is. Obviously, I, I'm not an engineer. Uh, I, I don't...
We don't want to be doing power lines across people's yards. And so, yeah, I, I understand what I'm asking. I do, I really do. I'm just telling, the gradient on this driveway, what, what is the grade on the driveway? We, we can go on while he looks it up, because I'm, it's a number, guys. I mean, it's, I've gone down this road sideways in snow at a forty-five degree, with my thirteen-year-old son, and he looked at me and said, "Well, Dad, th, if that had been so scary, it would have been fun," you know? I mean, we went down that road, that, that, you know, the slope on Oklahoma, again, i- it was an exciting thing. Um, it only happened once. So anyway, yes, sir.
Martin Riquelos, LSI.
Thank you.
Four-thirty-nine East Main Street, Westminster. Uh, the slope at the beginning is four percent for the landing, and then goes up to eight-point-eight, and then flattens out to about five-point-seven.
Eight percent's a lot, guys. It really is. Um, I'd, so David, help me understand, is there not a way for us to compel going out the other end?
I can jump in from a legal standpoint, if you'd like.
Because it's probably what it is.
We're veering into that realm.
It is what it is. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so that was, that would be a civil matter between the, the two sets of private properties, um, there. There is no way the county can require, um, or make the requirement from a legal standpoint that, um, someone else, A, do something with their, someone who's not subject to this do something with their property. We can always make the recommendation that someone asks, but we can't make it a requirement of the approval either.
There's going to be an expense to it.
Right. Um, so essentially, we, you can always make the recommendation that a ask is made, but you can't force that to be the end-all, be-all approval holdup, um, because that would require someone to purchase an easement from someone else, um, which is financial.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm screaming in the wind. Let's move on. All right, thank you.
And so I, I'll also mention too, so again, there is an existing entrance there, um, but one of the other items that needed to be looked at is site distance, you know, looking up and down the roadway. Uh, this does meet site distance with the exception, uh, that there is a hillside down in this area, uh, where the developer is proposing to, to grade that back to help that view, so you can see further down the road.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then, um, one other thing I, I feel like I should mention too, so, um, actually going back to the aerial, because it's a little bit easier to see, this, um, wonky shape here. Uh, this is actually proposed to be conveyed to the neighboring property as well. So instead of this proposed house having a property line that runs all the way down here to a point, uh, it made more sense for the developer to convey that to the neighboring property, so that way it's a little bit cleaner lines. Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna move on to, uh, the concurrency side of things. Just to give a little background, the, really the whole reason that we are before the Planning and Zoning Commission as a final subdivision plan is because that when this was tested for concurrency management as a preliminary plan, it did not meet adequate standards. And when it does not meet adequate standards at preliminary stage, it must come back to the planning commission as a final stage. So, um, this was retested, um, so, uh, as it was done back in twenty-twenty-two, everything was tested, so as far as schools, police, road, fire, and EMS. Police, roads, fire, and EMS facilities were deemed adequate. Uh, so those were not retested at this point. What we ran into, what they ran into previously was for the schools. Uh, mainly, uh, Freedom Elementary, and I believe Oklahoma Middle, um, was approaching inadequate at that time. So, uh, this plan, uh, again, proposes the same number, um, so the same numbers were tested again today. And for the record, so this is located in the Freedom Elementary, Oklahoma Road Middle, and Liberty High attendance areas. Uh, when these were tested, Oklahoma Road Middle and Liberty High were rated adequate for fiscal years twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty. Uh, Freedom Elementary is rated adequate for fiscal years twenty-twenty-seven to twenty-thirty, but it's inadequate for fiscal years twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six. And without getting into all the numbers here, which, again, I'm happy to, if you guys would like, um, but ultimately, Freedom Elementary is currently in the inadequate stage of things. Uh, that is acknowledged, and the Carroll County School Board has allocated funds, uh, that have been approved by the Commissioners of Carroll County to expand on Freedom Elementary, to, to help alleviate that overcrowding that's currently there. That's, get my numbers here. So that was approved, or that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. And that is why you see that drop in children and capacity in Freedom Elementary in the twenty twenty-seven fiscal year, because that is when it's anticipated to be completed. However, because we are still in an inadequate state within the six-year CIP, the code kind of alludes to what the options are here. And so I'm just gonna read these verbatim. So within chapter one fifty-six, which is concurrency management, the Planning and Zoning Commission can issue a conditional approval if a public facility or service is inadequate and a relief facility is planned in the six-year CIP to address inadequacy. The planning commission may approve the plan, subject to a phasing plan for recordation, or may defer the project and place the plan in a queue to be retested on an annual basis. And then our director, Mr. Heine in the back, may approve amendments to that phasing plan. So while the code does permit Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the plan pursuant to chapter one fifty-six, the plat recordation may not occur until either one of two things. The construction of the relief facility is underway and completion is anticipated within six months, or the Board of County Commissioners determine that exceptional circumstances exist. So there's one of two paths that we can see occur here. And I'm outlining this because I seen it with another project somewhat recently, where the recommendation from staff is that the Planning and Zoning Commission conditionally approve the final plan with the condition that building permit reservations for the four lots are to be reserved for fiscal year twenty-seven, when it's anticipated that these improvements are to be completed, and that the recordation schedule phasing plan will enable the plat to be recorded when the relief facility construction is anticipated to be within six months of completion. The alternative to that is that the developer and the engineer can go before the Board of County Commissioners and request that this is an, this is an exceptional circumstance, so that they can record and move forward ahead of that schedule. So those are the two pathways. But ultimately, at this point, code does permit that the Planning and Zoning Commission conditionally approve this, subject to recordation not occurring, or I'm sorry, yes, recordation not occurring until twenty, or the completion is anticipated within six months, and then building permits not be allowed until after that point, after recordation of the plat, which is anticipated in twenty twenty-seven.
That was twenty twenty-seven?
Yes, fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. And so one thing I want to mention too, so Freedom Elementary, the expansion of that, that plan has been submitted. It is currently in review. For those who are watching, who want to keep up with that, the file number for that is S-240034.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, guys.
So I could, you're?
You could, yes.
Just to explore this timeline, and to really, in the true sense of concurrent things. So twenty twenty-seven is the magic number for the school, and that's school expansion completion? Is that what we assume, we would assume?
That's the assumption, that's correct.
And that would be for the fall of twenty twenty-seven?
So that is my understanding. Obviously, that's a few years away, so things may change. But that is my understanding, is that that would be in place prior to that fall.
Okay, so say fall of twenty twenty-seven. Now come to you guys. We're in the fall of pretty much twenty twenty-five, so two years from now. That school's gonna be ready, which would mean you could have your homes done, moved into September, you know, in a perfect world. So how long for you to get things done, shovels and grounds, permits, blah, 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 all that kind of stuff? The grading changes, the stormwater, blah, blah, blah. Is it a two-year project to build these four homes, or is it less?
Tim Burkhart, I'm the property owner and developer, nine-five-four Barracuda Cove Court, Annapolis, Maryland. The timeline's gonna be a little more than that. I mean, by the time you get that approval, you're gonna be looking at a six-to-nine month time to develop the property. Plus, so that takes you to, you know, nine months past whatever date that you come up with. That's fall of twenty twenty-seven, and maybe to twenty-eight, and then another six months to build those homes. So really, you're looking at really close to a two-year timeframe from grading permit to completion.
So, you know, I'm on the work group for economic development, and one of the things we've heard, and we've heard this not only in that work group, but as a commission, we hear the length of time to get things through the paperwork and the process and shovels and ground, and, you know, it's a long time. Is this an opportunity for us to say, hey, let's, how's it referred to? You know, the planning commission can put it in queue, or was that the queue? Or give approval, put it in queue, get things moving, and then the director of the department, Mr. Heine, approve amendments as the phasing goes in? So this can be sped up. I'm just trying to speed this up a little bit. Because even with Freedom opening in September of twenty twenty-seven, they're not gonna be ready. So how can we help them?
So I'm gonna ask my legal counsel to chime in if I'm going off rails here. But my understanding, based on these sections of code, is that it kind of outlines the path that the planning commission can take. If you're so inclined to provide some type of approval for this proposal, that it is somewhat limited on that timeframe, as far as what purview the planning commission has. If the developer and the engineer wish to exceed that and have things move a little quicker, that's where that request before the Board of County Commissioners would come in, to say, this is an exceptional circumstance, please let us record now and start construction now, so that we can be ready by whatever that date is.
So it's not up to us, it's up to the county commissioners, basically? And be y'all and all.
So I have a quick question before I forget that one. We heard from Mr. Kane, when he was talking about schools, that education and projected enrollments had actually decreased some. Is that reflective of these numbers, or is that a separate number?
So these numbers were pulled from their enrollment projections on their website, I'd say a couple of weeks ago. So these should be, assuming they haven't updated it in the last few weeks, these should be the most recent numbers.
Okay.
David, I need to be caught up here a little bit. I'm kind of intrigued about the fourth lot. I mean, why are we here approving three when there's one more there? Why not the fourth one? I mean, could you give me an explanation? Maybe I've missed something here.
Yeah, thank you.
It's like the mysterious fourth lot. Need to know about it.
So we have a lot of parameters here in Carroll County that we try to keep up with. And these are more or less the metrics of what is being constructed, what's being proposed, approved in Carroll County. To help alleviate some of the issues that we've run into, we, code and staff mainly focus on what's new. So if you look at this property here, there would be nothing stopping the current property owner from submitting a building permit and saying, I want to put a house on this property, subject to a building permit and everything, but as it currently sits, this property is buildable. So when they want to come in and subdivide things, they're creating, whatever they're creating, in this case, is three lots, and what's left over, because this is not zoned agriculture, we can't call it a remaining portion. What's left over has to have a lot designation, which is lot number four.
Okay. So the developer then has to go through all of this that we're going through now for that fourth lot?
So our code defines a major subdivision as four or more lots.
So this would be a minor?
This is a major.
Major.
It's a major.
Four or more.
Four or more.
No, the three.
I understand.
The three that we're approving, approving, is a major or minor?
Here comes Laura.
Laura Mathias.
I mean, I don't want to muddy a water.
I think we're overcomplicating it, right? So what you see there, David is just trying to explain, and perhaps explaining, maybe we're going down, it's getting too complicated. So when you look at the drawing that they have, there are four lots, right? None of those lots look like what exists there today. They're taking that parcel and dividing it into four lots. Okay, that's the simple answer to that, okay? If you look at what can be built now versus what can be built then, that's a different conversation. Yes, what exists today, if you flip back, you could build on that parcel today, but it's not the same lot as what is created via this subdivision. Do you understand that?
All right, I'm with you.
Okay, you got it, four lots.
Still with you here.
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you intend to, do you intend to make that fourth lot available in the future?
Well, yeah, we're creating three new lots, and like they're saying, they're re-subdivision of the one lot into four.
All right, I got you.
So it's re-subdivided that one into four.
Light went on.
So we're gonna build all four. It's not like this fourth lot is standing by itself.
I've got you. Okay, I'm with you now.
Thank you.
The fourth lot has a house on it already.
I'm there. I'm there.
There's no houses in there at all.
Fourth lot is the big piece.
I understand what's going on. I understand what's going on.
It's one lot that's vacant right now.
See, I love simplification, and we're in the weeds here.
This is why I was asking what I asked, because I was confused whether it was three, four, or five.
Yeah, okay, I understand now.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, because I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was three.
We asked this gentleman to come back to go through all this, I mean, come on. So, okay.
All right.
Good luck.
Anything else?
No.
Pete?
No.
You? Richard?
Okay.
So you're looking for motions?
No, well.
Public comment, sorry, public comment.
Public comment. Are there, is there any public that would like to comment on this project? Okay, seeing none. A motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion, one of which is to approve the final plan of subdivision pursuant to chapter one fifty-five, development and subdivision of land of the Code of Public Local Laws and Ordinances of Carroll County for FX dash twenty-two dash oh 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 three Byron Hills. Pursuant, I forgot.
Thirteen.
Pursuant to all the stuff Dave didn't want to read. There's thirteen conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Voice vote.
Mr. Huff? Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Swyson?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Abstain.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect, we have six YAs and one abstain.
Next.
I'll make a motion to, I'm not gonna go down that path with, although I really think, just comment about expediting these processes, I really think that's something. Perhaps we need to address that in the ten-year plan that we're working on, and that really, that comes up too often. But anyway, that's another time. So I'll make a motion that we conditionally approve the final plan of subdivision pursuant to chapter one fifty-six, Adequate Public Facilities and Concurrent Management of the Code of Public Local Laws and Ordinances of Carroll County for Project FX dash twenty-two dash oh 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 three Byron Hills, with approval conditionally approved with the three conditions outlined and discussed.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Huff? Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Swyson?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Abstain.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect, we have five YAs and one abstain.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay. Good. Let's take a ten-minute break, please. We are back. We are number 11. Water Resources Element. Welcome.
Good afternoon, or, no, it's still morning. Good morning.
Good morning, I hope.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I am back for part two of working our way through, um, giving you the overview on the Water Resources Element. And today I'm going to focus on water and wastewater, which are two of the three sort of main topics that are addressed by the Water Resources Element or WRE. Um, you'll see as we go through, and Alex give a little more detail as we do go through, but you'll see that there's different ways of looking at water and wastewater. And you're often looking at water and sewer master plan amendments. And those are, that, that plan looks at more of a 10-year perspective or like more immediate in the grand scheme of things, whereas the Water Resources Element is looking farther out because it's taking into account all the long-range stuff that's in the plan as well, not just the existing priority and future service areas. So you also have to just keep in mind as we go through that the state has one method we use to calculate, um, available capacity for the water and sewer master plan and a different way to do it for the Water Resources Element. So I'll try to explain that a little bit as we go through because it does make the numbers look different. And, but they are looking at different things. Because we don't have the wonky mouse anymore. Hey. So we're going to start by, um, looking at the drinking water supply. And overall, drinking water is expected to be somewhat of a limiting factor for many, most of the systems, but at the same time, um, for most of them, the limitations are more easily overcome than, um, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's going to be a hard and fast limitation. It's something that we can overcome if we work, um, on certain things. So looking at that, and where did? So overall, I'm going with the, um, traffic light. Having a brain cramp. You know, making it like traffic light, and I had brought this to you, I think, in the fall and last fall already. Um, giving you a kind of just a general look at red light, green light, yellow light in terms of, um, how the different systems are looking. And for drinking water overall, freedom's going to look good because we've got a reservoir and we've got a lot of water supply. So, um, freedom, of course, has a lot of water available, okay? If you look at, um, the ones in yellow, they're in yellow because they have limitations, but those limitations can be more easily overcome than the ones that are in red. And those include Hampstead, Manchester, Mount Airy, 20 Town, and Westminster. And I'll, we'll look at each of these on the next page, but, um, most of them can, um, overcome the limitation with additional water sources or increased appropriations. For Westminster, you're probably aware that they're constructing a water reuse plant. And that'll give them another half million gallons, uh, per day of capacity with the ability to expand to 1 million. So they already have in progress, um, this plant, which, when you look at the numbers, because this was done in 2023, it's a point in time estimate, that wasn't in place. So it's going to look, you know, this will obviously already be something that will help mitigate the issue in, um, at moving forward. For Union Bridge and New Windsor, the biggest problem they have is that their wastewater treatment plants are constraining their water use. You can't, you know, you can't pump 500,000 gallons of water through a 200,000 gallon wastewater treatment plant. So, um, even if they get more water, they're going to need either wastewater treatment plant expansion or a new plant. So looking at these numbers, and I, I gave everybody, I know you got these by email, but I gave you a hard copy of the summaries. And, um, so if it's a little hard to look at up here, you can also look in your, um, you can look in here at the numbers that's on this one. The, the next one that I'll show you, um, came after this. But again, this is showing you the numbers for what I just told you about, the red light, green light, and yellow light. So for freedom, we've got, um, got enough water. The only issue that freedom will have is that MDE, and, and this is, in this case, it's not a bad idea, but MDE, um, would like to see redundant capacity. So if there is an issue, you know, we might need to bring on some, some wells online that we do have ones that we can look at. But water should not be a limiting factor there. And, and the numbers you see here are the numbers that, um, we get when we use MDE, Marlin Department of Environment's, um, method that they have set in the guidance document to use for this plan. So when you get to the next, the ones that are in yellow, um, again, this is looking at, um, all of the water service area, including the long range. So we're looking at buildout of the entire water service area. And you see the ones in yellow are all negative, they will, which means that they will need to find additional water in, in order to serve the projected demand for their 2023 buildout of water service area. So for most of them, that means they can look for additional water sources, which is often additional wells. Some of them can increase their appropriations with MDE, so how much they can withdraw from a well. Uh, for example, Manchester could increase the amount of water they could use if they increase the pump capacity at their water treatment plant. Because that's actually limiting the full amount that they could use. Mount Airy can do more water if they expand their wastewater treatment plant. And, um, again, Westminster's number here reflect, does not reflect that they have a project in progress. So you look at these numbers and, and it looks like all of these have limitations, um, that look bad, but in reality, a lot of these could be overcome, you know, by looking for more water. New Windsor and Union Bridge are going to be the most difficult because, um, New Windsor needs to expand their plant. Now, that's not their only issue. They have, um, their main water source is three miles out of town and, you know, feeds through a pipe to town and it's 100 years old. I mean, they have, they do need to upgrade their water system, refine some additional sources. But their main limiting factor is until they expand their wastewater treatment plant, they can't pump any more water. So, um, then for Union Bridge, Union Bridge needs a new wastewater treatment plant. Their plant is only 200,000 gallons. So in order to pump more, you know, they can get more water, but if they do, they still have to be able, the wastewater treatment plant has to be able to handle whatever comes through the pipes. And they need a new plant because the existing site is, um, can't be expanded and it's in the floodplain and gets flooded. So, um, you kind of can see there's a lot of issues that are going to need to be addressed with, um, the water system in order to move forward with the 2023 buildout, in order to realize that. So one of the things that I mentioned is that we have a different way to calculate capacity for the water and sewer master plan than we do for the Water Resources Element. With the, um, and that, and that does create much larger numbers. And one, some of the things that are different is that the water and sewer master plan, again, it's kind of looking at what the capacity is like now, like it's, you think it's kind of black and white. Do we have capacity or don't we? And in the near term, it's a little easier to look at, look at it that way. But when you look at it long range, you have to, MDE adds in other factors that need to be considered. So they've added 10% for drought demand, you know, as we, um, expect to, to experience more severe droughts. Um, they add, uh, for, when you calculate the capacity, they might take your largest well out of service to assume that, you know, could you still provide water to everybody if, if one of your wells was offline? So they're looking for redundant capacity, so, um, and diversity in your, in your sources. So the, that, and then they also assume 250 gallons per day, per day, per household, which is their standard planning figure. But many of our municipalities have, um, data over time that shows they use far less than that. So, you know, all of these things sort of inflate these numbers compared to what we would see if we looked at it with the water and sewer master plan or if we didn't take those long-range factors into consideration. So I've added this in so you can see what it would, how it would look different if we just looked at the way you do it in the water and sewer master plan versus the WRE. So freedom still has enough water. But when you look down at the others, you start to see how the numbers decrease significantly. So for Hampstead, for example, the column to the far left is the one you saw on the previous table, using the Marlin Department of Environment, uh, method for estimating. The one in the middle column is that same area, but just subtracting the demand from the permitted capacity. And that, that's essentially what the water and sewer plan does, is subtract demand from permitted capacity. It doesn't take into account these other factors. And then the one all the way to the right is what you would actually be looking at in your water and sewer plan because the one in the middle includes long range, the one on the left does not. So it's existing priority and future. So it's existing priority and future service areas. So when a Water and Sewer Plan Amendment comes to you or the triennial update, and you need to certify that it's consistent with the master plan, you're, the numbers don't match because they're done differently. So we, these numbers are also shown in the Water Resources element so that you have something that you can look at to make a better comparison.
Brenda? Just, so clarification for me. The, the, the numbers here, and just stick with the additional capacity needed on the, on the left, the 887 down. That is, that is capacity through the public, through public water only? Is that what those numbers are?
Right. Each one of these are the, we have eight municipal systems in the county.
Right.
And so these numbers show for each system what the available capacity would be if you built out everything in the 2023 service area.
Okay. So everything was, everything was populated, blah, blah, blah. This is what it would take to satisfy the water demand or need?
Correct. That's how much more you would need. Or for Freedom, you've got that much extra. For everybody else, it's how much more you would need.
Mount Airy needs another 300,000 gallons per day or whatever.
Right. You, using this method, yes.
Right, right. Okay. But so it has, take, doesn't take into effect any of the well sys, well, private well and all that kind of septic and all that kind of stuff? This is just public water supply?
On this particular table, yes. The plan itself does look at it, but.
And the public water supply in a mapped area that they can service now.
Right, right.
Thank you. Okay.
So when a system exceeds 80% of its capacity, Maryland Department of, of Environment requires that they submit what's called a Capacity Management Plan. And that Capacity Management Plan basically helps, it's meant to help the municipal system lay out their plan for how they're going to continue to operate and serve the projected need for that system. They don't want it to get to 100% and they haven't served everything they were supposed to serve. That, the, the method used for that Capacity Management Plan is the same method we use to come up with these numbers. So eventually, when these systems hit 80%, they're going to be going through this process with MDE anyway, and having to figure out how they're going to make the improvements needed in order to, or maybe they aren't going to make improvements. Maybe they're going to cut back on the amount of planned growth. But whatever they're going to do, what, you know, they need to figure out what it is in order to ensure that demand doesn't exceed the potential capacity. And when we look at it long term, potential capacity may not be something that they have right now, but it could be something, you know, regional, it could be the, one of the planned reservoirs. So it's not to say that future growth could never happen because this number is negative. It's just saying this is what they're going to need to come up with in order to go with what was on the ground in 2023 for, for the water and service area. Okay? So then they'll, they'll use the information there to help reevaluate what their needs are and then prioritize their actions moving forward, whether it's reducing demand or increasing capacity. You know, what, what will need to be done in order to make that happen? And then any, you know, the specific improvements that are needed within the next 10 years go into the Water and Sewer Master Plan. So this is, this is where the, the water supply outside of our growth areas comes into play. We, when you look at, we looked at the ground, water and surface water supply and estimated, not we, our consultant did, but we estimated the water supply in groundwater and surface water countywide. So that as MDE is, you know, we're saying, well, we don't have this water right now, but the county overall has water available, we just need to access it. And that's what we really want to demonstrate to MDE for future growth, that there are ways for us to access water. So when you looked at this, and it's called a water balance, when we looked at that at the planning scale, we found that there's plenty of water. Like I said, the problem is accessing it. You know, we need to get permits from MDE and everything, but the water is there. And of course, as you know, the Health Department is the one that approves the residential private wells. So we don't normally, that's not like something that goes in our Water and Sewer Master Plan because it's not public supplies. And if, if the well that's put in draws over a certain amount, they also will need an appropriation permit from MDE. So the water supply outside of our growth areas is not anticipated to have an impact on planned growth outside of that service, the service areas. So we talked about adding sources such as wells or increasing appropriations. Those are the more immediate sort of, not quite as long-term things that you might look at in order to help increase the supply. But as I said, we want to show MDE that we can supply water in the future if we want to plan additional growth. So part of what we do then is we look at regional water supply alternatives. That's usually like, once you get beyond what a system can find on its own, then it's pretty common to then start looking at regional alternatives. So as you know, we have planned reservoirs that are on the books. Other options could be surface water intakes. We've got quarries that could be options for supplies, additional groundwater wells, and even interconnection with other systems. And in the case of Westminster, well, this is indirect potable use, reuse. Theirs will be a potable reuse. But, so there, there are then other alternatives that we have available to us once we exhaust, of course, everything costs money. But if we really want to do it, it's that. Money might be the limiting factor as opposed to there is no option.
Brenda, on the, the number three quarries, for, for Union Bridge and, and New Windsor, the quarries are just surrounding both those areas. And then the rest of the area on, in Union Bridge and New Windsor is probably surrounded by a lot of ag press. But my question is, you're talking about municipal water supplies here. As these quarries get bigger and bigger and bigger, which they will, and deeper and deeper until the, until the rules and regulations on quarries stop them from going a certain depth, the total groundwater is lowered. Total amount of groundwater is lowered for everybody else in the area. So there's nothing on the books or anything that protects any developments that not, that's not connected to municipal water supplies. I think this is going to be a real problem in the future. There is huge amounts of water being pumped out of these quarries every day, almost 24/7. It, it's going to impact everybody in those areas. And, and I'm not sure, there, there's a lot of development outside of the municipal water supply areas that is in, in that region of Westminster. That's very close to the quarries that's along 31. There's acres and acres of land that can be expanded in those quarrying areas. I think in the future, there's going to be a real concern and maybe a need to look at how some of this water is going to be supplied. I mean, you can only go so far deep in a well and, and still maintain a household or even afford to go 300, 400 feet deep or deeper. And I, I don't know what we're going to do about it. I think it's, it's some kind of a concern to be, should be put on the radar, especially in that Wakefield Valley area. There's just a huge amount of land there that is available to be opened up for quarrying. And if, if, if the amount of trucks that are running out of Lehigh now is any indication of what quarrying is going to be, it's going to be nothing but more and more and more and more and more. And it's going to affect, it's going to affect the water resource in that area. I, I think, I see it already. I'm out there, I see it.
Right, right.
So I, I don't know. I mean, we, Westminster put a line from a quarrying operation into, for emergency water. I guess that's what it was called. That may happen. Because you, you talk about New Windsor, their water supply is a long way from the town. And it's a extremely, that's the most innovative system I think I've ever seen, how they put that together. That is American ingenuity at its best. But they're going to have a problem in their future. And then one thing that may save them is the fact that they won't, they don't have a whole lot of opportunity to expand because quarry towns don't expand. They just don't. You go, you have to go elsewhere. So I, that's, that's just a, a big concern that I have in that whole area about what the quarries are doing to the groundwater and the water supply for the people that live there now or in the future. Just a, just a comment.
Yeah, that's, that's a good comment. So it is something maybe that should at least be highlighted as like, we need to consider that in the future, we might need to figure out how we're going to address this issue if people in those areas, their wells run dry or they can't get enough groundwater in order to supply what?
New Windsor is a prime example of that. Their, their water source basically came from springs. And as you dig deeper and deeper and deeper in the ground and, and pump more and more water out of these quarry holes, the first thing to dry up are springs. They just go because of the water tables. And so I just thought it would be a good idea to highlight that as a concern in the future for the residents in that, in those immediate areas.
Thank you. So if, just to highlight a few action items. The action items are essentially recommendations or things that, I don't even know if you want to call them recommendations, but they're things that can be done to help meet what, like, so we've, we've developed strategies which, let's see. Trying to see what I put in here. It's been so long since I updated. All right. So the page six or so, you can see there's basically the same set of strategies used countywide and then for each municipal system. And we're, you know, it's protect and, and sustain what we have. It's develop new as needed, both for water and wastewater, promote water conservation, and, and also have emergency plans in place. So that's for water and wastewater. So these action items are things that could be done in order to help achieve those strategies of protecting and sustaining or developing new, et cetera. So some of the main things that I wanted to highlight in terms of what we could do to help with that for water supply is look at diversifying supplies in the future. For increased redundancy, as I mentioned, that would be, that's a way of sort of helping to provide a little bit of safety in your system and when, if, if something is not out of service or something happens and you need to make sure that you're continuing to provide water to your customers. And then mitigating climate change impacts is, you know, we're expecting increased frequency of significant rain events, but also increased incidence of severe drought. So those things do affect your water supply and your water supply system. So then investigate water reuse options. That, that may be something that becomes more prevalent when we get down the line and some of these other strata, improvements become more difficult to do. Drought management plans. Most of our systems have drought management plans, but they don't all. And you need, you know, we need to know what to do when that, when we do have drought. Identifying emergency supplies and measures. Again, some of our systems have that, some of them don't. And then shared service agreements. As you know, the municipalities meet monthly with the county, you know, staff. The staff of the municipalities meet with the county staff in our department monthly to talk about water resource issues because we share a lot of services with them, specifically meeting our stormwater permit requirements is, is one of the main things, but all things water resources. And so sharing some of the services that one municipality or system may have that another doesn't may help to make, save the other one more money while, you know, sort of, it's just sort of a shared thing that might help everybody become more efficient and save money. And we got wastewater. Again, wastewater is also expected to represent a significant limitation for some systems and to some limitation to others, even if it's not significant. Most systems should be able to help increase their capacity, their flow capacity by making improvements to their existing systems. So when you look at wastewater, Manchester and Mount Airy are the ones that come out green where they would have capacity available at build out for the 2023 sewer service area. And Freedom, Hampstead, Tonnitown, and Westminster are yellow. So with, with the Freedom plant, I, I'll go into these in more detail, but that, part of the problem there is that we only have part of the capacity allocated to us of that plant. Hampstead is at their, you know, getting close to the maximum that the plant can handle. And then, you know, just other issues with Tonnitown, Westminster. Most of them can be overcome by identifying inflow and infiltration, which is, like, an example would be, you know, with all the pipes that come into the system, if there's a crack in pipe, you've got water entering into the system that wasn't, you know, through flushing the toilet or something going down the drain. It's coming in somewhere else. But because it's adding water in there, it's, it's taking away flow capacity of your plant. So if you can reduce that, then you, your plant can treat more, you actually gain capacity because you're reducing, you know, extra water that's coming into the system that doesn't belong there. So a lot of them can gain additional capacity by doing that. And many of them do have programs in place already where they've been actively doing this for years. So with the, with Freedom, we don't have the entire, the plant is a three and a half million gallon per day plant. We don't own it and we don't operate it. It's operated, owned by the state, operated by Maryland Environmental Service. And we've only been allocated, allocated 2.74 million gallons out of the 3.5. So if you have, if we had the three, whole three and a half million, we might not be negative. But since we only have part of that, we will get to the point where we don't have capacity to serve everything at projected build out demand. So, and then some of them are constrained. So, you know, the, there's the Jesveek Bay. You've heard about the pollution diet for nitrogen and phosphorus and sediment. And so all of our wastewater treatment plants have limits on phosphorus and nitrogen. So if they, you know, they have a cap. And if a certain amount comes in, you know, they can only have up to that cap that, that's flowing into the plant. So most, all, well, all of our major, all of our plants that are over 5,000, 100, 500,000 gallons per day have been upgraded to a higher treatment level system. And the two smaller ones are Man, Manchester's in progress and New Windsor evaluated if there's an expansion, but not expected to be a significant limitation. Again, New Windsor and Union Bridge, expansion and new plants needed. That, that, and the funding is where the really significant part of that limitation comes in. So with the numbers, again, Manchester and Malinary, they will have cap. So with the numbers, um, again, Manchester and Mount Airy, they will have capacity available still at build-out for 2023. Um, you see the four systems that are in yellow. Westminster is so close, like, one I and I improvement could easily put that as a positive. Um, I, I know one of the, one of the, um, I and I improvements on the Hampstead wastewater treatment plant several years ago, um, gave them 50,000 gallons with that fix. So, that's why it's so important to invest in that, it's a cheaper way to gain capacity than expanding a plant. Um, and then for Freedom, it maybe, that we might need to negotiate with the state to get additional, an additional allocation of that 3.5 million gallons per day, so that it's more than 2.7 million gallons, so that's a possibility. Um, again, New Windsor and Union Bridge will need money in order to overcome their limitation. And the, the differences in the methods, um, again, I highlighted that before. Um, so if you look at the numbers here, you look at it, and for water and sewer plan, how you, you know, subtract the demand from the permitted capacity, you see how much more is green. But taking into all the fact, all the factors into account that we need to for the water resources element, and looking long, much longer term, we've got the four that, that will need to have more, put a little bit more investment into fixing some of those things. Even Union Bridge is still red, if you look at just existing priority and future service areas, and subtracting demand from permitted capacity. So, there's no way around it for them, I think, um, which we've known for probably 25, 30 years with the developments that have been held up there. Now, this is what I mentioned previously, we're at 80% of operating capacity, they're going to have to submit something to MDE anyway that shows how they're going to continue to have capacity available for the, what they need to serve. Again, private systems, Health Department approves a residential septic systems, and these systems aren't anticipated to have any limiting factor in terms of, um, planned growth for the master plan. Um, and it is the state's policy to, to limit them, but it's, other than the growth tiers, we don't have anything else in place from the state right now that says you can't do more than this number of septic, or it doesn't require systems to be best available technology. Um, it just encourages that type of treatment, but, um, right now, that's all we have in place. But again, that's not anticipated to be something that limits your, you know, plan growth.
Brenda, excuse me, are there grants for the, at systems?
Yeah, the Bay Restoration Fund, which is on everybody's, if you have a sewer bill, it's on your sewer bill. If you have a private system, it's probably on your tax bill.
Yeah.
Um, that Bay Restoration Fund provides, uh, money through the Health Department for the best available technology type systems. So if a homeowner wants to pursue that, they can work on, through the Health Department to get grants for that.
Okay, thanks.
So, these are the same things I already mentioned. Our options for wastewater, you know, primarily fix I and I, um, look at potential for water reuse, and, um, expand or build new plants where needed. The highlighted action items here are going to be, um, the I and I, uh, New Windsor and Union Bridge, I know, Union Bridge did a, uh, re, study on their plant, and if the money can be found, they would be building a new plant that included the enhanced nutrient removal type tech, treatment technology. Um, and of course, same with New Windsor, they need to be able to, uh, finance it. Um, there's other things to look at, zero discharge and water reuse opportunities that avoid, um, hitting up against the nutrient cap limitations. Um, that could be something which, this is a little questionable now even, but like, you could find new places to do spray irrigation. Um, but with PFAS, that, now that's another thing that's being questioned. Um, of course, another thing is to fund and move forward with the projects that are already in the Water and Sewer Master Plan. And, um, one of the other things that we've highlighted here, as I've mentioned, the differences between the water resources element and the Water and Sewer Master Plan, and how you come up with the numbers, is we want to work with MDE and Maryland Department of Planning to try to, um, see if we can work with them to have some consistency that, between the two methods, so that it makes it a little easier, especially when you have to certify consistency with the master plan when Water and Sewer Plan Updates or Amendments come to you. So that, um, we've highlighted these issues throughout the plan, the differences, and what, how the numbers come out differently, and, and this then is an action item to try to pursue that, and, like I said, we're trying to highlight that to MDE. So that's what I've, I've got on, uh, water and wastewater. Happy to answer any questions. For the next meeting, my current plan is to go over with you the stormwater section, as well as climate change, emerging contaminants, and then talk a little bit about master plan implications for, um, the, what's in the WRA. And then, the rest is tentative, but I'll, um, then look in the, at countywide strategies and action items, specific things for Freedom, and, um, and then any additional discussion before we consider sending it out for 60-day review. So any additional questions on water and wastewater at this point?
This is a complicated subject.
It's very complicated, and I realize it's very boring too, so I'm very sorry for that.
No, it's really, it's not, it's not boring at all.
Just haven't found a way to make it really exciting.
What, what comes to my mind, and I want to go back to the questions I asked previously. Um, when Tonton Town was here, they talked about possibly buying water recharge areas. Um, and I understand that. We, we went down that road a long time ago and tried to explain why it was so important to have water recharge areas. But my question is this, if you have a planned development, say in the Wakefield Valley area, I'm familiar with that area, and there are some deep wells there in, in Wakefield Valley, which is really Avondale, but we'll talk about that another day. Um, the deeper the quarries go, the more water they pull out, which lowers the water table. How do we compensate, um, with calculating the water recharge areas when the water table is being lowered all the time with this huge amount of water being pumped? And the quarries are required to pump this water back into the streams, because as the water table goes down, and I know I'm getting in the weeds here, but you have to kind of explain it this way. As the water table goes down, then the sources that provide water for the streams, like Little Pave Creek that runs through my farm, and then the water, the, uh, wastewater treatment plant is right above my farm, so they need X amount of water to make that thing work and mix with the water that's in that stream so that it's semi-potable when it comes out of that plant, which then goes, goes on down. So, the question is, how in the world do we keep up when we have water being pumped out of our, our water areas, so it could shut, really, literally shut down any future progress in Carroll County for a lot of reasons, if we don't really take a hard look at how we can recover some of that water? That's, but there's a requirement, that so much of that water has to go back in these streams, because as, as the, as the springs dry up, that provides a source of water for the, for these streams, it comes from somewhere, just doesn't come out of the Rocky Mountains here.
Right. Right, you have to maintain your base stream flow.
Yeah, it's going to be a huge problem in the future, so I would like to know, does the state monitor? They're, they're always monitoring us, but do they monitor how much water is being released through the pumping of these quarries? I mean, these are deep holes, and that's where the water is, down deep. Do they monitor how much water is, is being, um, diminished in the areas because of what's going on there? And I see it. The stream by my farm, half of what it used to be, with a huge amount of discharge coming out of the Westminster Sewer Plant, that's, cause it's mostly called wastewater, but it's sewage. And so how in the world can they keep up with that? Without adding water from, say, the quarry, the quarry next door to make that plant comply? So there, there's, there's, there's a discrepancy. Union Bridge, same problem. You know, they, they have a huge problem up there. Flood plain, can't afford it, you know, it, it's a, it is a problem. So, I, I just wonder how much monitoring is going on to industrial outfits like the quarrying operations, because they just, I mean, they dig a deep hole.
Right.
And they, and when they do, it's just not the stone that they're pulling out, they're pulling out a, a valuable resource, and that is called water. So it's, to me, it's, it's, it's going to be a real problem in the future, because they're not going to stop, they're big, and they're going to get bigger and bigger and bigger, and deeper and deeper. So how, or, is that just going to shut down these communities, or is there, is there a way of doing something about it? I don't know. It's a big problem.
Um, I'm going to look through the action items, because we've got a whole lot of action items in there, I can't remember every single one, but I'll, I'll look through them before the next meeting and see what we might already have.
You see where I'm heading?
Yes, yes.
You see my concern, my, where I'm heading with this? Because I'm physically seeing this happening in my area.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I'll let you know whether we already have something in there to look at that.
Not trying to add to your burden of things that do, Brenda, but...
It's good to remind myself what's in there, that's, you know.
Okay, thank you.
(laughing).
I know.
You'll, you'll all be getting eventually.
See, we can talk water recharge forever, but if it doesn't do any good to have water recharge area, it ain't all going to fall from the sky.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other comments? Is there any public comment on this? Okay. Then we move to 12. Mr. Heine, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's slightly afternoon.
It's afternoon.
Keyboard not working.
You have to use the mouse.
Okay, how do I exit? Exit full screen, there we go. And, oh my, I've lost the mouse, there it is.
Good afternoon. So, um, the, uh, the Board of County Commissioners has asked us to look into Chapter 156, which is our Adequate Public Facilities and Concurrent Management Code. And, um, I'll be honest, when they, they first brought this up, I was a little bit concerned, um, because, um, this is a significant code. Uh, when it was first contemplated in 1991, it took seven years before it was adopted, and I believe that when, uh, when it's been opened to, to look into it, it's been a multi-year process, and, and, um, we've got a lot going on right now. But we did talk, uh, with the Commissioners about what specifically they were concerned about with the APFO and wanted you all to look into, and we narrowed the scope of that considerably. So, um, a couple of concepts that I just wanted to go over to, so everybody's clear on them as we talk through this, um, please ask me any questions if, if something's not entirely clear. So, our APFO, our, our ordinance, Chapter 156, relates to adequate public facilities and concurrency management, and those two terms are often used interchangeably, and I just wanted to clarify exactly what we're talking about when we talk about those two aspects of the code. So adequate public facilities refers specifically to looking at projects, individual projects, and ensuring that the, the public facilities that would serve tho- those projects are in place. So do you have adequate water, adequate sewer, those sorts of things, on a project-by-project basis? Concurrent management is a larger holistic view of the overall, um, county, and reporting that information on a yearly basis to the Board of County Commissioners, so that they can make capital improvement-type, um, changes to address any inadequacies that have come to light during the course of the year. A good example of this would be, um, for like, schools, right? So, um, there are, we have municipalities that are within the county that all, that feed into the schools as well. Municipalities are not subject to our, our, uh, the county ordinance, they have their own, um, APFOs, so they look into those things. But we do not track and look at, um, individual municipal projects for adequate public facilities in the public schools, right? Again, the municipalities look at that, they have their own APFOs. On a yearly basis, we compile all that information, so we look at the impacts of the municipalities, of the county projects and so on, and compare that to adequacy for the schools. So, that's, that's kind of the difference there, right? Individual county projects for APFO, and then on a yearly basis, looking at concurrency for the entire county. Does that make sense? Perfect. Um, so, like I was saying, the APFO ordinance has a lot of components to it, and the reason why it's such a large lift to contemplate opening the full code and reviewing everything is because of the scope of the overall code. First you have what types of projects get tested. So minor sub diversion, subdivisions versus major subdivisions and so on. We, we test major subdivisions, we don't test minor. You could get into whole discussion as to what projects we test, right? Then there's what tests do we look at? Um, so, in, in Carroll County, we look at water, sewer, transportation, police, fire EMS, and schools. Those are the six types of facilities we test. There are others, there, and I'll show you, there's some other jurisdictions that test others. Are, we could reduce them, that could be a whole discussion as to what kind of tests. Then you can get into how do you test them? So what are the thresholds for adequacy or inadequacy? So that, for each one of the things that we test for, how we test, we could get into that. So you can see, this would involve a lot of discussion with a lot of players, the Board of Ed, with police, fire EMS, and so on, this would be a, a, a large endeavor and could take multi-years. But again, we talked with the Board of County Commissioners, and the specific scope that they are interested in us talking about is how are projects treated when it is determined that they're inadequate? So, so it doesn't matter what test we're talking about, at the end of the day, if we determine that there is a facility that's inadequate, how does that limit the potential for that development to move forward? And so that's what we're going to focus on and, and discuss. So, those are, that's kind of the background of, of the APFO ordinance and, and what we're looking at. So, um, I'm going to talk about the direction, um, how it affects development, how some other jurisdictions are addressing it, and then some options. We've come up with some ideas, um, but certainly are open for any additional ideas that you all may have. So, again, we discussed the APFO with the Commissioners in Fabio, February and April, and we'd, uh, through those discussions, the focus should be on what happens to proposed developments when a facility is deemed inadequate. And, and so, I thought it was interesting, as we were talking about Byron Hills earlier, and then, and that topic came up, and so this is where I want to provide, make sure that everybody's crystal clear on how the process works. And then some options for, as Mr. Kane, as you indicated, maybe there are some other opportunities for, for, um, speeding up the process. So, um, again, another concept here, there's two different types of residential development that we deal with. There's subdivision, where you're taking one lot and, and carving it up into, and subdividing it, right? And that's typical for single-family homes and so on. We also have site development, so a good example of that would be condominiums, where you're not necessarily subdividing the, the underlying property, but it's a site plan, and then, and then there is, um, residential development on that site plan. So I want to make sure we differentiate those two, okay? So, um, in the presentation here, I've used the term checks, but when I've talked with you all before- all before about APFOs, I've used the term gates or, or gateways or there, there stops in the process where a decision has to be made and a determination needs to be made. And there are two of those checks for residential subdivisions. There's one check for residential site plans, and we'll talk about those. So the first check is with you all. You all are the first check to determine adequacy. And again, the purpose is to look at and to make sure that we're not unduly burdening existing infrastructure and so on. And per APFO code, if a facility is deemed inadequate, you, the planning commission, must deny the plan approval in accordance with Chapter 156 unless, and so here are the, the three options, right? For subdivision, a relief facility is planned in the current CIP. So within six years, it's anticipated that that issue will be addressed for subdivision. For a site plan, it needs to be under construction and anticipated to be complete within six months. Okay, so the, so again, differentiating the subdivision and the site plan. Or the second option is that there's some sort of mitigation that's acceptable to us. And so this could be something like if there's a transportation inadequacy, the developer, through a traffic impact study and so on, has determined that they will make this improvement and address the inadequacy. So that's allowable, right? Because it's part of the plan, they can move forward. The third option is the Board of County Commissioners can determine that there's some sort of exceptional circumstance and they can allow it to move forward. So it comes before you all, you make the determine, you know what, there's no, it's, something is inadequate, the developer can't address it, so you have to deny it. Recourse that the developer has is to go before the Board of County Commissioners and say, there's an exceptional circumstance, I would like to move forward. And then it's their determination. So that's the first check, right? The second check, which is only for subdivision now, because site plan just has the one, subdivision falls on, on our staff as far as the recordation process. So again, so we're talking subdivision, where you're taking one parcel and making multiple. The developer cannot move forward with recording those lots unless these options. Again, now we're getting, we have that same terminology. The relief facility is, is under construction and will be complete in six months, or the developer is mitigating it, or the Board of County Commissioners approves that there's exceptional circumstance. And where, so a, a good example of this, and this was alluded to when we talked earlier, was the Mineral Hill subdivision, which you saw a couple of months ago, right? So there was inadequacy with Freedom Elementary. However, there, it is in the CIP to upgrade it. So that first check with you all, you are able to approve it because of the expansion of the school being in the CIP. However, the developer could not record those lots, that second check, that second gate held him back because we're not within six months of that, that work being completed. However, he went before the Board of County Commissioners and they discussed and there was determined that there was an exceptional circumstance and they allowed him to proceed. Okay? So that's, those, those couple checks is what we're talking about. So I threw in here a couple of slides, just some, some background information for, for context. Other jurisdictions, you, again, you can see the six that we test for and what the top list are other counties and then the bottom list are municipalities. Pretty consistently, water, sewer, roads, and schools are tested kind of universally. As you move to the right in the table, you can see some of the other things that other folks test for. But again, the, the Commissioners were not interested in delving into what we test for and so on, so that's not in the scope of what we're talking about. But I wanted you to be aware of what other jurisdictions do and, and as comparison to One of the questions is, when does the, the test occur? Again, one of, one of these checks or one of, one of these gates? Pretty universally, it's during the development process. So it's prior to coming before bodies such as yourselves that the checks are, are done. I was, we're not aware that, that second check of the recordation occurs in many other jurisdictions. And then something that was interesting, because I think the topic has been brought up before, as when we determine something is adequate, the development doesn't necessarily happen immediately. And so if, if the developer, you, you've heard it with Laura coming up here and talking about extensions, and it's like 10 years later and there, and, and so on. The question is, does that approval expire? And in our case, it does not. Once you get through the approvals, that, that APFO threshold or their test is done. And, but that seems to be pretty consistent. Now, Anarundel County and Frederick County, they do have some sunsets on that, but it's, that's not unusual that when something is tested for, if it, if it passes the test, then you're good to go. And we do monitor those approvals. And for things like schools, approved projects are submitted to the Board of Ed's so they know kind of what's in the pipeline and they incorporate those into their testing, the determinations of capacity, looking, projecting forwards.
It seems like there's long extensions. We heard a couple this morning. They're, they're small.
And they're small, yes.
Stuff that don't affect school capacity or fire response, things like that.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. They, they would not, they would not be tested from an APFO perspective, but from a concurrency management perspective, we do track those and those are added into our analysis. Yeah. So talking through a couple of options. Now, there's always the option for no change. That's obvious. One option that we came up with was to reduce to one check or one gate. And the recommendation would be that that would be, we maintain the one that you, your check, but once you determine adequacy, and, and we don't have to necessarily change that, the threshold for adequacy for like that it's in the sixth year CIP, but then we remove that restriction on recordation for subdivision plans. The example from Byron Hills that we heard today, right? In that case, you all approved it, but now they, if they don't go to the Board of County Commissioners, they're held until 2027, right? Considering that the amount of time of going through, getting their permits and, and construction and so on, they could probably start today and maybe they've got, they're getting occupancy right around when the school is, is there. So now, if it was a longer duration, maybe if the school CIP was six years out and not a couple of years out, is it, doesn't become an issue? So it, but that's, that's one thing that we could consider is eliminating that, that second check. Another option is talking about the different types of tests. And in my mind, there are two categories. There are those categories that are kind of critical and the developer needs to address. Water, sewer, transportation, right? If you do not have sewer capacity available, we don't want them moving forward, right? That has to be addressed. So those are kind of, they have to be addressed. The other three, schools, police, and fire EMS. The amount of development that we're seeing in Carroll County is not going to lend itself to a developer having to construct a new school. We see that in other jurisdictions where they put in a thousand-unit subdivision and there's a need for new schools and so on and so forth, right? That's not happening in Carroll County. So, and, and from a police and fire EMS perspective, there's not a whole lot that a developer is going to do about increasing the, the number of, of police on staff or the, the number of firing EMS. So can they really affect that APFO? So one suggestion would be that those three would be tested and noted, but they would not necessarily hold up a development moving forward. And they absolutely would be deter, or quantified in the concurrency management so that the Board of County Commissioners were aware that there is an issue with schools, there's an issue with fire EMS or any, any of those three, so they could address it from a CIP perspective, but it would not necessarily hold up the developer from being able to proceed. So that's an option.
That would still limit building permit on the other end until they were, right?
If, yes, if you left in the second check, then yes, yeah. So the, these two, maybe these two options, maybe they have to go and they're both done. So again, just throwing ideas out there for, for consideration.
Does that second check stop larger developments though?
It can.
Stop larger developments? In other words, you talk about Frederick County, they might have a thousand-unit development. Carroll County would stop that second check, that might enhance larger developments to come in, possibly?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow that.
In other words, the, the second check probably stops larger developments from coming in.
The second...
Five hundred unit developments. You're talking now EMS and fire and schools. Where before it's just water, sewer, and what, roads. So would, would that second check encourage, if we took that out, would that encourage larger developments to, to be considered?
I see what you're saying. Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Yes, potentially, yeah. I would say certainly on the schools side of things. Police and fire EMS, we, we... I don't believe we have a lot of approaching inadequacies there. I think Laura's in the back of the room, she, she could speak up if I'm speaking, if I, if I'm incorrect. But police and fire EMS, probably not as big a deal. Schools, yes. There are inadequate schools in the county that have limited some of the development, such as Mineral Hill and so on that we've talked about. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the police and fire, if I remember, it was like Lineboro or something like, some places like that, which are on the periphery.
Yeah, yeah.
Where the police.
So, yeah, I like, yeah, I like the thought.
Yeah, so the, the, the last option, and I'll be honest, I'm not, and I'm not thrilled about this option, but I'll throw it out there and certainly for discussion, is that after a certain amount of time, if there's an inadequacy, that regardless if the inadequacy is still there, the development could move forward. So sort of like an expiration. And I'm not...
Why would we do that?
Yeah, I'm not keen on that idea.
I'd like to see an expiration on...
Oh, okay. Go do it anyway.
Right, yeah.
I think we, and I don't know if we've ever, it's ever been discussed, I like seeing expiration on extensions. Yes, there's, there's the small ones, but I mean...
You get 15, 20 extensions.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, shouldn't there be a limit?
Yeah, how much time does that cost your staff?
Uh, not a whole lot. I mean, we basically review to make sure that there aren't any substantial code changes that, that would necessitate it coming back. And as was mentioned, most of these extensions are one or two lot subdivisions, small ones, that were not tested for APFOs anyways, so we don't have to go back and recheck those. So it's, that's, that's not a significant issue. So happy to answer any questions. Really, the, the intent today was to, to get the gears turning and, and thinking about, should there some changes be made to our APFO ordinance? And again, the Commissioners are looking at a very narrow scope for, for process change, potential process changes when something is determined to be inadequate. If there, if any of these are of interest, our next step would be to, to go through the code and, and do the red line revisions and, and bring some language back to you all. So if you're, if you're ready to, to pick and choose which ones you're interested in, certainly happy to move forward. Otherwise, can let you digest this and come back and discuss it at the next meeting.
I think, I like the, what is it? The third one, remove restrictions.
Removing restrictions on facilities that may be unreasonable for the developer to influence.
Yeah.
Would that be in conjunction with the, the second bullet, which would be to eliminate the, the second gate, the recordation? Or would it be standalone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Those two in conjunction?
They got to go together.
Yeah. Simply, I think it makes sense to allow them to move forward with recordation, but if it's, if the schools are completely messed up, then building permits is going to say, hold off. So, does that make sense?
Uh, no, so there's no check on a building permit.
So it would still just go through for everything?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so it would be one check. You all would, would be the final test. We would bring, bring you all the, the metrics. And as long as everything was, was adequate, you, you would approve it and then they could move forward. They would not be held up with an inadequacy with, with recording their subdivisions. With what we're discussing is that the third bullet on there would be taking schools, fire EMS, and police, and those being more advisory rather than a hard stop. So if a school was inadequate, you could still approve it, a project to move forward. There would not be a second check. They could go ahead and pull their building permits and, and record their Platts. But we would document that in the concurrency management report to the Board of County Commissioners so that they were well aware that there, these projects have been approved and that there is an inadequacy in a certain school, for example, and that, and that something needs to be addressed. Now, obviously, it's the, it's the Board of Education that would address that and so on, but that information would be conveyed to the, the entities that can make those changes.
And that'll, that'll require the builder to give some timeline to their project and occupancy and whom, you know, when the homes go up for sale and things like that to see if it fits within that CIP timeline and all that kind of thing to, for the school, you know, if the school's going to be open in time and things like that.
So...
I think it broadens the conversation, but I think that's something that the developers and builders would appreciate.
So if we only did the second bullet, which got rid of that, that second check, you're absolutely right, that as part of the, the discussion, when they come before you all, they could present that their build-out is going to happen over the next five years, six years, whatever, right? So building 20 to 25 houses per year, it's, and it'll take them four years or five years and the inadequacy is going to be addressed in five years and you all have that comfort level. That would, that second check, if we got rid of that, you all would be seeing that information. If however, we do the third option there also, that from a school's perspective, it wouldn't become as necessary because you're no longer holding projects up for schools. That information about build-out and so on could be captured in the concurrency management report to be conveyed to the Commissioners and the Board of Ed, sure.
Mm-hmm.
It's, this is, it's a complex topic.
What, I'm sorry, what'd you say? Richard?
No, no, nothing.
Oh.
I think his head exploded.
So, I mean, we can certainly work on looking at what the code changes would be to influence looking at the, the second and third option there and bring that back for further discussion if that's, that's kind of what I'm, I'm hearing.
I like that.
Okay.
Very easy.
Very good. And I think I've got one more slide. So, yeah, so we'll work on that draft code, bring it back for further discussion refinement. And then the normal course of, of the process is we would take those back to the Board of County Commissioners for discussion, public hearing, and then potential adoption.
Okay.
So, cool. All right.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure. Now, I cannot read and show, there we go, I can read on this one. The last item, I, I don't want to, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman.
Just...
Do you want to ask for public comment?
I'm going to. Any public comment? Is there any public? Okay. All right. Now, item 13.
Yes. And I promise this will be very quick.
One of our favorites.
So what I've got on the screen is, is slightly different than what I, what we sent to you because I made some minor tweaks and I've got those highlighted in green, but they're very minor changes to what was provided to you in advance. But we'll go through these and then I, those are highlighted in green and then there's some items highlighted in yellow, just I wanted to make sure that you saw that we did make those changes. And hopefully at the end of this, you'll be good with us furthering this on to the Board of County Commissioners. So the first ch- So the first change, I had been waffling on this before, as to whether behind the meter and front of the meter, whether those definitions were really inherently understood, and decided that it probably just makes sense to put a definition in. So I added a definition behind the meter, a term that describes energy generation or storage systems that are installed on the consumer's side of the utility meter. So picture your house, you've got a meter, anything that's on your house side of the electrical grid, so that's behind the meter. Front of the meter, then, is the opposite, if it's before the meter. So I added those definitions in. And then where we talked about energy storage devices, I added the front of the meter term to those, so that it's clear that that's what we're talking about. So that occurs here in the distance requirement, and then also in the land use descriptions, energy storage device front of the meter. So that's changed in those. And we'll scroll down through. Very quickly, the difference between setbacks and distances. So a setback is the distance from a use to the property boundary. Okay? So a building or a solar facility to the property boundary, that's your setback, okay? A distance, and this is more important in the discussion for the energy storage devices. We have a chapter section, what is it up here? Distance requirements, 158040. These are distances from uses that we want to create greater separation from. So it's not a set 100 feet. In this case, they're two distances. There's a distance that we say from a rubble landfill because of the noise and things like that. It's an additional distance besides the setback that, from that use to the property boundary, and also related to residential dwellings. So these distances are specific to residential uses. So that's another way to think about it. Setbacks are to your property line regardless of whose next use, whether you're commercial, industrial, whichever. Distances are specific to residential uses to create that separation from nuisance-type uses that could be a nuisance to a residential use that's adjacent. So where I clarified that, went too far. So this, we're in solar setbacks and distances, I just added the term and distances, and no variance to setback or distance requirements are permitted. This is more important for the new use of the battery energy, or the energy storage systems, but I wanted it to be consistent between solar and that. And that was highlighted in yellow, because we discussed that no variances to setbacks are required, or are permitted. Solar facilities will often have these energy storage systems associated with them as an accessory use. And I just wanted to be crystal clear that the new section on energy storage devices does not apply to the solar facilities, because those are accessory uses, right? So the front of the meter, energy storage, those are separate, they're not the accessory use that you see with solar system, solar facilities. So I added in, "Energy storage devices associated with solar generating facilities are considered an accessory use to the solar generating facility and not subject to energy storage device requirements." Energy storage devices must be placed," and then this was the same sort of language that was in there about when they're an accessory use to solar facilities. We had talked about the opaque fencing, so I left that in. Again, adding the term front of the meter to this. And then for the setbacks and distances, I used the same setback that we had for solar, so 100-foot setback to all property lines, regardless as to whether, what the adjacent use is, right? But then we have the distance requirements, which are different for residential, and that's where we said 1,000 feet from a residential zoning district, and there's a requirement as far as the distance to a, slightly larger to the actual house. So again, just clarifying setbacks and distances, and again, no variance to that for these battery energy storage devices. And fencing, I kept that the same as being opaque, and I think that, oh, there was a typo, or a word eliminated that was missing. And I think that's it. So happy to answer any questions from your review of the document you were sent, or any of the green highlighted things, but I think we've captured basically what needs to be changed to meet the State Renewable Energy Act, and if you're amenable, would like to take this before the Board of County Commissioners to work on the process to adopt.
All good.
I got no issues.
Ralph, if you're good.
No issue. Do you need a motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion, that we approve the solar text amendments as discussed, and in order to forward to the Board of County Commissioners.
Second?
Voice vote. Okay.
Mr. Huff? Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lester? Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Swoyson?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Abstain.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect, we have four yays and one abstain.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
You are good. Any.
Thanks, Chris.
Comment on the solar text or general public comment? Okay, hearing none. We are adjourned.